Good evening. Welcome to the November 3rd zoning board of adjustment meeting. We welcome all of you here this evening. First of all, I would like to let you know that the Goffstown zoning board is an elected board of five members and up to five appointed alternates. Currently, the board has five elected members and three alternates. If anyone is interested in serving on the zoning board, please see Derek Horn for more information. The board has a posted agenda for each meeting and tends to follow the items in order. The board will open the public hearing on an application to receive testimony from applicants, abutters, and affected parties and ask questions about the appeal. The public hearing will then be closed and the board will enter into a deliberative session to discuss the merits of the appeal. For each application, the board will decide to approve, approve with conditions, deny or continue to a later meeting. You are welcome to watch the deliberations this evening, or you can contact Derek Horn at Town Hall to get the results. For an applicant's request to be approved, there must be an affirmative vote of at least three members. An applicant can request a continuance if there is not a full five-member board to act on an application. At this point, I will say to you, we do have four members, one alternate that we will appoint to be voting tonight. The chairman, Kevin Rigstad, is going to arrive late. We will have five eventually. Therefore, anyone that has an appeal that is being heard prior to Kevin's presence has the right to decide whether to continue the hearing, since there are only five of us here, four of us here at the present time. If you are aggrieved by a decision made by the zoning board of adjustment tonight, you have the right to appeal to the Superior Court. However, before appealing to the Superior Court, you must request a rehearing with this board to preserve your right to the appeal. Rehearing requests must be filed within 30 days of the decision and state all reasons why the decision was illegal or unreasonable. Failure to request a rehearing may forfeit your ability to appear to Superior, appeal to Superior Court. At this time, I would like the members of the board and staff to introduce themselves.
Derek Horn's staff.
A Lupi member.
Kathy Hooton, acting chairman, vice chairman.
Galahad Brook, member.
Vivian Blondo, alternate.
At this time, I would like to appoint Vivian as an voting member of the zoning board, which will make us a five, four-member board. All right, approval of the minutes. The minutes from the October 5th, 2010 meeting. Are there any corrections? It being none, do I hear a motion?
Motion to accept.
Do I have a second? I'll second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vivian? Are you going to abstain?
Yes.
The vote is 3-0-1 for the approval of the October minutes. Okay, first item on the agenda has been continued from the October 5th, 2010 meeting. Madeline Enman, applicant, is seeking a variance to allow the construction of a 36-foot by 16-foot shed addition to an existing detached garage. The variance is required because the proposed addition will be set back approximately five feet from the front property line, whereas Section 4.3 of the zoning ordinance requires a front yard setback of 35 feet. The property is located at 15 Leslie Drive, MAP 6, Lot 59E, in the agricultural district. The property is owned by the Kenneth and Madeline Enman Revocable Trust. The ZBA voted 5-0-0 at the October meeting that this application did not have a regional impact. In the spirit of the continuance, is there somebody here that, is there anyone here that is representing or Madeline Enman? Or Madeline Enman, would you like to speak?
Rodney Stark on behalf of Mrs. Enman.
Good evening, Attorney Stark.
The, I believe that subsequent to the last hearing, Mrs. Enman submitted a larger scale, a 40-scale print at the board's request. Which makes, which makes the, you know, obviously the details of what she is proposing to do, this location, somewhat better. And I, so from my understanding, Derek went out and took some photographs of the...
Right, we have them.
Of the, I've seen those. So he... In reviewing, in reading the minutes from the last meeting, it was obvious, obviously in reading it, that the board was looking at both sides of the barn as being possible locations for this addition. The, the, shortly after the October meeting, Mrs. Enman spoke with Derek Horn about the idea of making a driving or parking pad, at least, on the right-hand side of the barn in the general location of where her proposed addition is. The, and that, that has been, that has been done, I mean, it's just earth that's been placed there. Derek told her that that would not be a problem. And if, if the board approves the, the application, it would serve as the, as the subbase for the concrete foundation. If, if, if not, it would simply be a parking area. It's not, it would not be built upon. In any event, the, Mrs. Enman obtained, if I can find it here, estimates from Paul Bedard for the construction of the foundation and retaining walls on the left-hand side compared to the right-hand side. And I have copies which I'd like to submit. The, the cost for the, for the earthwork, if you will, on the right-hand side of the building where the addition is proposed is $4,600. On the left-hand side, the, for addition of the same size, the work would be $11,500. As is apparent from the photographs, and if any of you have been there in person, the ground slopes considerably from the existing garage on the left-hand side down into the yard and would require construction of a considerable retaining wall as well as much more fill than would be required on the right-hand side. And the difference being, I don't know, what, $6,900 additional. I submit that in support of Mrs. Enman's petition or application to, to demonstrate that the, the severe economic impact that building on the left-hand side would have under these circumstances. The, the, I have a, I have a letter here also, which was provided to Mrs. Enman today. I'd like to read it. It was, it's provided to her by Fire Chief Edward O'Brien. It's dated today, based upon a site visit that he made today. Dear Mrs. Enman, after responding to your request, I investigated the current road conditions and fire department access for the residences on Leslie Drive. Leslie Drive is a gravel-based road with varying widths between 14 to 16 feet. The road is in good condition with the exception of slight washboard condition where it intersects with the Goffstown back road. The resident at number 15 Leslie Drive, which is Mrs. Enman, is constructing in addition to the barn slash, garage slash barn on the west side of the property. After observing where the foundation for the addition to the structure will be, I do not believe it will impact fire department access to any residences on Leslie Drive. If you have any further questions or concerns regarding this issue, please do not hesitate to contact me. I'd submit that to the, to the board. The, what he was observing was the, and speaking of in terms of the foundation, is this material, this gravel, which has been placed on the right-hand side of the garage, out the full 36 feet to the, so it, so that it, it's equal or in distance to the front of the garage, the existing garage. The, I think it's, it's strong evidence that, that a concern that was voiced at the October meeting about fire department emergency vehicle access to the, up the roadway is, is apparently not well-founded. The, I would say, I'd like to say this as a, a, as a fallback position, if you will. And that is that, in the event that the board is disinclined to permit this addition, Mrs. Enman would propose to set the addition back six feet from its present proposed location. What that would result in is if, if you look at, at the 40-scale plan, you'll notice that the, that the barn is presently set back 6.9 feet from the edge of road. The proposed addition is set at 4.8 on that plan. By, by moving the, by moving the, or by shortening the addition by six feet, the, the addition would be 10.8 feet from the, from the edge of the road. That, it seems to me, I'm, I'm, as I say, I'm putting that in as a fallback argument because I, I do believe that the, the addition as proposed is reasonable under all of the The, the, but nevertheless, would offer that as a, as an option. So I'd be willing to answer any questions that the board might have, if I can.
Mr. Chairman? Can I ask a question?
Yes.
This is the picture of the barn. Over here.
This is the picture of the barn.
It seems to me there was a building there in 2006.
There was, there was. There was an existing shed, as depicted in that photograph, which is part of the town tax records, I believe.
I didn't, I, I just noticed it while reading through the...
That, and that is, and that, that building, that shed, the front of that shed is approximately equal in, in line with the front of the barn.
But you can see the little...
That's right. That's the, those are the foundations. Those are still in place.
Okay. All right, that's the only question I had. The, the, does anybody else have another, any other questions at this point? The 6.9 feet and the 4.8 feet, I am assuming that that is from the property line, not just from the road line?
I believe what that represents...
Right of way. The right, it is the right of way.
It's, I believe it's to the edge of right-of-way.
Okay. Okay. Are there any more questions that any member of the board would have for Attorney Stark? There are none being. Mrs. Enman, did you want to have anything else further to say?
No, not really. I think that was me pretty good.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience that abuts this property that has anything to say? Would like to comment? Anybody that is affected? Okay, being none, we will close the hearing. And at this point, I am going to excuse myself. And Kevin Rigstad, our chairman, has arrived. We will have a board of five, and he is going to handle the deliberations of, at this point.
All right. So we just closed the public hearing and we've introduced ourselves. I am Kevin Rigstad, the chairman of the zoning board.
We all introduced ourselves.
Yeah, I figured you did.
Yeah.
I think this is your copy.
Okay.
All right. So with the public hearing closed, any comments, motions, discussion?
Well, I, I am very appreciative of the added comment that Mrs. Enman would be willing to set the addition back an additional, what's that, how many feet was it?
Six feet.
Six feet. And I think that where the fire department did take the opportunity to go up and look at the area, which I think was very concerning to us at our last meeting regarding safety issues and traveling on the road, especially in the fact that down the road, there might be additional development, as was spoken by the abuttered Diane Garst, that Mrs. Enman paid particular attention to our concerns.
Would it behoove us to consider that six-foot additional setback in the spirit of future development to leave room for sidewalk, et cetera?
You think that road would get a sidewalk?
I'm just making the suggestion. I'm playing devil's advocate here, that's all.
Will you be back now, now she would be back?
She'd have a 30 by 16 rather than a 36 by 16. Now would you have to set back from a sidewalk, too?
Well, you've already got an issue with the garage being 6'9".
Right.
So now she'd be a 10'8".
Well, what I see is essentially she's probably replacing that shed that was there. I don't know how big the shed was, but I think she probably demolished it four years too soon. And she could have, but I, I, I don't see any reason why this shouldn't be granted. As far as sidewalks is, I think, as a full person, the more sidewalks you have, the more public works people you need to clean those sidewalks up. So I don't see a future sidewalk there.
I said, I'm just throwing it out.
Okay.
So is there a motion?
Do you want to go through the variant? Do you want to go through the variant?
Sure. So we're, speaking of variance, which requires satisfaction of all five variance criteria, and the first of being that the variance would not be contrary to the public interest, and similarly, the second is the spirit of the ordinance is observed. Whether it's accepted as is or whether it was set back six feet farther, that would still be within the front setback requirement of 35 feet. So it, you know, it's, you know, still in violation of zoning ordinance, it'd be just less so. Any other comments? Granted, the variance would do substantial justice. She talked about additional storage. Any comments? Values of surrounding properties will not be diminished. Was there any, anybody making a claim on values of property? Then the last is that demonstrate that literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship, as in, we denied it, they couldn't either use their property, which is part of paragraph B, or paragraph A is that this property is no different than any others.
What was stated by Attorney Stark before you came, Kevin, was that Potter Construction, Paul Bedard, did an estimate, and if she was to have put the garage on the other side of the building, and there are pictures, that it would be $11,500.
Okay.
And if she was to continue to, and then if she was to put it on the side, which she proposes to put it on, the cost would be $4,600.
Okay.
So there is, to me, a difference of a financial issue, because we had discussed whether or not she could have put it on the other side. And I think clearly from the pictures that are showing there, that it isn't the best alternative to go on to the other side. I, I can understand that from the slope and from the additional cost that it would be.
I have one question, and I wanted to ask Mr. Stark before. It says it required a 200-foot frontage, but does she have the required acreage?
No, it's slightly undersized. The assessor has it at 1.92 acres. It is a two-acre requirement.
Okay.
All right, that was the five variance criteria comments question.
I'm, I'm looking at, at the original photographs, and, I mean, obviously, on, on the house, it shows the drive and, and, I mean, it's, it looks like there are parking vehicles and what would be the Leslie Drive right-of-way. Would the same thing be happening in front of the garage in proposed addition? Or would the addition allow for them to remove most of the, that I see in this photograph, there's trailers and tractors with trailers and all that that are being parked in front of the barn that look like they're encroaching into the, into the Leslie Drive right-of-way?
Well, she had said that the, the shed was being built to store those particular items.
So that we could store those particular items and get them out of the right-of-way.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, and looking at the GIS and the overlay, it has the parking areas inside the road, inside the right-of-ways.
Right, right.
Well, I make a motion that we approve the variance with the condition that was offered by the applicant, that, that it would not be, even with the front of the barn, that would be six, set six back, set back six feet from the front side of the barn, which I believe is what they proposed, correct?
Yeah, I think, I think we're looking at it would be set back 10 feet.
10.8.
10.8 feet.
10.8, that front corner, instead of the 4.8.
Okay, so that it would be, well, as I'm saying it, that it would be set back 10.8 feet from the front property line, as proposed by the applicant. No other changes to, that I see, that it falls within, and that encourages to meet the public interest and spirit of the ordinance, as it does not further impact the right-of-way, or the setback. That it would do substantial justice, the values of surrounding properties would not be diminished, and they demonstrated hardship.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? A motion's on the floor to approve the variance with the modification. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Congratulations.
Now that the board has completed its deliberation, I intended for that to ask you if it would be permissible in that six-foot distance, that, that setback area, for a concrete pad to be put, for the purpose of, for the purpose of changing oil or adding gas, rather than, you know, any vehicle, rather than, rather than just doing it on the ground. I, I apologize for not having raised that.
Derek, I think that's, is outside the, what was proposed for the application. My position that they have to talk to you about that.
Yeah, I think we can talk about that as part of the building permit.
All right. Okay. Thank you on that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy, for standing in for me while I was delayed.
Thanks for coming on. Have a nice day.
With that, we're going to move on to our second item on the agenda for public hearings. And I'm going to do it from here, if that's okay. Is this okay?
You're fine. You're welcome.
Number, the second, next item. Jess and Linda Shapiro, applicants, are seeking variances to allow a four-lot subdivision. Variances are required because three of the proposed lots will have less than 200 feet of road frontage required by Section 4.3 of the zoning ordinance. Proposed lot number two on Wallace Road will have 41.07 plus or minus feet of frontage. Proposed lot number three on Wallace Road will have 50.44 plus or minus feet of frontage. And proposed lot number four on Ridgewood Drive will have 50 plus or minus feet of frontage. The applicants are also seeking variances from Section 13.3.3.3 of the zoning ordinance to reduce the wetland buffers from 100 feet to 50 feet for proposed lot number three and proposed lot number four, by allowing relief from the outer 50 feet of the wetland buffer. The property is located at 215 Wallace Road, which is MAP 5, Lot 73, in an agricultural district. With this application, the applicants have requested the public hearing be rescheduled to December 7th meeting of 2010 in order to allow sufficient time for Conservation Commission to review and report pursuant to Section 15.3.7.6 of the zoning ordinance. And then also, prior to the public hearing, the ZBA needs to vote on regional impact. So I see that we have two votes on our plate. One, we can vote on regional impact, and then we can vote on, let's vote on that first. Any motions?
I'll move to find if there's no regional impact.
Any second?
Second.
Okay, with the second, any comments? All those in favor that there is no regional impact, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained? Then the next vote would be, is the applicant not here, is that correct?
Correct.
They haven't changed their mind? They don't want us to go through?
They haven't changed their mind, and when we sent notice out to abutters, we included information that they had made a request to continue to the December 7th meeting. The Conservation Commission site walked the property on October 30th, and they'll be discussing the results of that site walk on their November 17th meeting.
Okay, so they will have, possibly have a decision before the December meeting?
Yeah, they should.
Yeah, they should be able to provide comment for the December meeting.
Okay.
I make a motion that we continue this application until our December seventh meeting.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, repstand? All right, December seventh, they've got it. In this, next application, William and Jennifer Langivan, applicants, are seeking variances to allow the demolition of existing roof and construction of a second floor on a single-family dwelling unit that does not conform to the required yard setbacks. Variances from section four point three of the zoning ordinance are required because the existing residence is located approximately eighteen feet from the front property line, whereas a twenty-five-foot front yard setback is required, and twelve point five feet from the side property line, whereas a fifteen-foot side yard setback is required. The proposed expansion is considered an expansion of a non-conforming structure under section fourteen point nine of the zoning ordinance. The property is located at fifty-seven Large Street, which is map sixteen, lot one six five, in a residential two district. Prior to the public hearing, the ZBA needs to vote on regional impact.
I make a motion that it does not have any regional impact.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, repstand? Five, zero, zero. So William or Jennifer Langivan?
Yes.
That's you?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, could you have, could have you sit right there in a separate desk?
Okay.
Only so we can all see.
Well, it picks it up better on the television as well.
Oh, okay.
And so a couple things, we have you on TV.
Okay.
Live, being recorded, so speak clearly, please state your name or your residence, and make sure I pronounce your name correct, so if it's correct.
Uh, William Langivan, we live at fifty-seven Large Street.
Thank you, and what are you wanting to do?
Uh, right now, we have a cape, we wanna go up one story, a two-foot cantilever in the back. We set the original plans in, I might measure to the stairs instead of the foundation and double check. I actually have, uh, twenty-seven feet to the foundation, it's nine, like nineteen-eight, nineteen-four, um, to the stairs. The side, I do have the twelve and a half where it's required for fifteen feet. But I do have, uh, well, actually, he doesn't live there right now, but, but that's proposed.
You're not trying to move your house, you're trying to build up, is that correct?
Yeah, it's a two-foot cantilever just in the back, I have all the space we need without, uh, with plenty of setbacks, sixty feet, you know. But yeah, we're not going out on the side, we're going up. We have actually a small foundation, so it's, that's why we're doing the two-foot cantilever. It's twenty-four by twenty-nine, it's kinda small and an odd size, but, um, I do have a letter from most of my, most of my butters, signing that they had no, no problem with everything.
Okay. So you're looking for a variance because, uh, you're building on a non-conforming lot, it's simply what it is?
Yeah, I'm short two and a half feet on one side and kinda four feet in the depth.
Right. Okay. And we see that you've included the answers to the five variance criteria. And I'm just gonna walk 'em through, walk through with that. So you talked about the first one, that the variance is not contrary to the public interest, and you talk about that the addition is not different than other homes on your street?
That's correct, I have pictures showing a bunch of the, uh, the two houses exactly with the proposed construction. There's colonials as well in the, in the street, two families in law apartments. Ours are still gonna be a single-family dwelling. My wife's pregnant, we have a third girl, so kinda need a little more space.
And you can, you can pass those around if you wish.
Okay.
Or select.
A few small notes on the back of most of them.
So you talked about the public interest, and then the spirit of the ordinances runs along the same line, and you talk about that the lot is bare, is barely non-conforming, that you're close on the side, and that, uh, that the addition is not gonna change that, that your property, that your house is not gonna be closer to your yard setbacks.
Yes.
And, uh, granting the variance would do substantial justice, you talk about that you'd bring up the home to today's standards?
That's correct, it's a, yeah, it's nineteen fifty-five home, nothing's really been updated. I, we bought the house in two thousand and six. We kinda had plans to hopefully do this, 'cause we knew we had to do a new roof, so we kinda wanted, we only got one bathroom, so we figured, you know, for, uh, for our family, um, we'd pretty much get the extra room, another bathroom, um, get the roof done at the same time that needed to get done. It's got, um, the chimney liner as well needs to be replaced, it's cracking, that's gonna be fixed. The electrical's all basically original, that's all gonna be updated, plumbing's gonna be updated, so siding's gonna be new, so we're pretty much doing everything.
Okay.
And, like I said, we can...
And the fourth one talks about that this would not impact or diminish the surrounding property values?
Uh, correct, I mean, like I said, there's colonials, uh, two families in law apartments, there's two buildings that are exactly like ours, one of them's on a smaller, non-conforming lot.
And then the last question talks about, you know, why your property, that why if we strictly enforce it, uh, why would that create a hardship? If we were to tell you that you couldn't build anymore because you're already on a non-conforming lot, it would be a hardship.
I think basically, I mean, the cost it would be to update everything just wouldn't be worth it for us, we'd pretty much probably sell and have to move. I actually live the street over, and I've been there, uh, since I was like twelve years old, and right in the area, area and everything, so, um, like I said, we like to stay, our family's growing. Not trying to do anything different than anything else that's in the area.
Okay.
And no butters have any, have any problems with anything either as well. And I got a couple extra ones that were pretty close on bodying my property as well on there.
And we'll open it up if there's any of the, your butters here as well.
Yes.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions of the applicant?
On the second floor, you have a bedroom and an office.
No, second floor, it's, um, it's like a standard cave, uh, where normally you go up, it'd be two rooms, but there's no walls there, so when you go up, there's just one big open room right now, currently.
I think she's saying, it says office there.
Yeah.
I, okay, that's, uh, my builder must have maybe sketched them out quick. That's, we sketch for existing, it's basically just one big open room. I mean, it looks like two rooms when you go, there's just no wall, no wall, no doors there. And right now, my, we're all on, we actually live on the first floor, 'cause my ten-year-old doesn't really wanna, I don't blame her, she doesn't wanna go up there by herself, she's, uh, insulation's not the best either, so we kinda, we're all on the first floor right now.
So by doing this, you're gonna have to upgrade a lot of your electrical and plumbing and?
Yeah, 'cause even the first floor right now is, um, we have some grounded outlets we've, you know, but not all of them are grounded, so we're gonna, the first floor, we're gonna go through and bring that up to date to at least the second, you know, right with the second floor. And then the plumbing, same thing with the addition of the, the second bathroom, um, you know, we gotta run pipes in the walls and everything, so while we're there, we're gonna, we gotta issue the old cast iron pipe, I think there's a ninety-degree in there, it just has an issue, so some of the plumbing downstairs, we can get correct.
Are all gonna be updated according to code?
Yep.
You have public source, correct?
Um, yes, we're the last one, well, we were the last one, they just built a brand-new house at the top, the colonial, and they ran the, the pipes down, but...
Do you have public water too?
Yep.
Yeah.
We're hooked up in, uh, Pinarville.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And you're being upgraded too.
Yeah, yeah, tell me about it.
Yeah.
Quickly.
Now, now, now.
Quickly, after you quickly.
Anyone else have any questions or comments, or, uh, Mrs. Langivan? All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
And, uh, we'll, we're gonna open it up to any butters. You can take a seat back in the audience now. So is there any butters here to, are anyone interested parties here in support of the applicant that wishes to speak? Any butters or interested parties that are speaking against this application? Anyone else would like to speak to this application? All right, I think we'll close.
Girl in the back there.
We'll close the public hearing unless there's any issue. All right, we're gonna close the public hearing, we'll deliberate now. Any comments, discussion, motion?
Well, I, I am very much in favor of this application, and, um, I certainly wouldn't entertain listening to more discussion, but I'm ready to make a motion.
Go for it.
I make a motion to, um, approve this application, um, in the spirit of the, our ordinances and of the criteria of the variances. I feel that this is something this family needs to do, that it would be a hardship for him with any other direction he would take at this time. I don't think it's necessarily the, the time of the economy to sell a house and buy another one, especially when you have children on the way. And I do not see the non-conformity as being that which we have not approved prior to this. When homes of this type in this type of location need expansion, we have pretty much always approved additions going up, which do not affect the existing dimensions of the building substantially. And based upon that, which we have done in the past, I would make a motion to approve this application.
Okay.
I'll second. Go ahead. The only thing that I would add is that I think he's, in upgrading his house, he's, he is making it more consistent with the neighborhood, um, to blend in even more with the other houses that are there.
Okay.
And I feel, I feel that he's upgrading his electrical, his plumbing and insulation, which is gonna be a big benefit to him for safety reasons and for, uh, heating reasons.
Okay. All right, any other discussion on the floor?
Yeah, other than the fact that it looks like a lot of the other houses are also non-conforming at this point, and this is nothing but an improvement and, and...
Welcome to Pinarville.
Yeah, basically.
Okay, with the, the motion on the floor, and it's been seconded to approve the variance, all of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, repstand? Congratulations. With that, we're gonna move on to the next application.
Can I make pick? Okay.
Curtis Bergeron, applicant, is seeking a special exception authorized by section fourteen point seven point three of the zoning ordinance to allow the development of a non-conforming lot. The applicant is seeking to replace an existing single-family dwelling in this repair with a new single-family dwelling. The lot is non-conforming because it has frontage on Dumont Park Road, which is a non-conforming lot. The property is located at ninety-eight Dumont Park Road, which is map twenty-five, lot thirty-six, in the residential two district. Prior to the public hearing, the ZBA needs to vote on regional impact. Any motions on?
Take a motion that there's no regional impact.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, repstand? Do we have the applicant here this evening?
Good evening. Curtis Bergeron, property owner, ninety-eight Dumont Park.
Good evening. Please tell us what you're like, what you want to do, and why you're here.
Well, the property was damaged in the first flood of oh-six, oh-six, yeah, and again in oh-seven. It's sitting on cinder blocks, it's an old camp that was converted to a house, um, it's can, there's no way it can be jacked up, like a lot of the other houses down there, with the full eight-foot foundation underneath, so it needs to be removed. The size change as the plans that I have for the existing and the proposed, um, the back of the house, which is, at the time, was about five feet off the pavement, off the road. Since they've put the water in and repaved, now it's about two feet off the road. That, the existing structure off the back is about twelve feet. By removing that and going wider, keeping within the state footprint area for square footage, it makes it more of a normal house, a twenty-four by thirty-six instead of what's there now. It'll increase one parking space, probably able to have a two-car garage under, because by setting it back from the road, which would make it safer for everybody, um, things would work out, and I believe the setbacks on both sides are fine also, by going with the whip.
Okay. Anyone have any questions?
Have you heard from the state on the shoreline, shoreline?
Yes, I, as a matter of fact, I just got the, actually, didn't get it to, the, uh, noticed that they received everything.
Oh, they've received?
They've received, they're, well...
They're still reviewing it?
Yeah, I brought it up a couple of weeks ago. And they just, they have, well, probably two weeks left now to...
Yeah, they have, they have thirty days to review the application, once they deem it complete.
And when I, I went up myself personally and sat down with them, and they said pretty much everything is, doesn't look like there'll be a problem.
What is the situation with rebuilding some of these homes that were destroyed in the...
If, if a house is substantially rehabilitated or repaired, which is fifty percent or more of the value of the building, it needs to be brought to flood, it needs to be raised so the livable space and all utilities are above the base flood elevation, which is why many of the houses, they have to go up three or four feet, and that's where many people have chosen to go up and do a drive-under garage with the unnecessary flood beds. So that's what he's proposing here, please. And, um, one of the requirements is you're limited on your square footage, what you can do in the, in the floodway, you can't take up more flood capacity, but this would be more conforming in eyes of the, the flood hazard district.
And the state is, well, sorry, the state is also, they're gonna require that I remove six feet of the driveway, the existing driveway that's there now. Right now, it's a two-car driveway. By removing six feet, it drops it to one, but I'll pick up the two spaces under, so end up picking up a space and safety issues, meaning it's off the road, you know, a little bit more than what it is now.
You're demolishing what you have now and replacing?
Yeah, it's, it's beyond repair.
That's why you said you're not jacking it up?
If it was, yeah, if it was stable enough, I could jack it up and keep the same footprint of the house that's there now, but it's...
Okay.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
When you remove that, um, pavement, what are you going to put there? Is it gonna be grass area?
Grass, yeah. Well, is that the proposed or the existing?
You have the paved drive to remain, and then you have the paved drive to be removed.
Yeah, right now, the driveway goes right to here.
And they won't allow that?
No, because of the square footage. You're only allowed to go a certain amount of square footage for the imprevises soil.
From the house?
Not from the house, for the whole property.
Okay, so why, why aren't you moving it?
I don't have to remove this section, that will stay where it is.
My question is, why wouldn't, why would you just, why would you remove this, why wouldn't you just keep this here? Or is this the only way in?
This is the, this is the, the roads here, and we pull in this way. So, yeah, so right now, you can pull two cars in here, but the house is gonna go wider than what's there right now, it's only twenty feet wide, I wanna go twenty-four feet wide.
I get it, okay.
So, I'll end up with an extra parking spot. So I'll end up with an extra parking spot and...
Two underneath.
I'll be 12 feet off the road instead of two feet off the road.
And the shed's gonna remain there?
Yes, the shed will remain there.
And the shed's gonna remain there?
That's just a little wood shed, yes.
Okay. Got it.
The state was...
So let me just walk through the staff for you, just to make sure everybody's on board with what we, uh, Jared. The application was not forwarded to the planning board of the Conservation Commission, required. Shoreline permit for the construction was submitted. The proposed construction is located in the flood hazard district, which requires this, that the, uh, according to the plan, the base flood elevation at this location is 170 feet. Next requirement, electrical, heating, ventilation, plumbing, air conditioning equipment and other services will need to be located above it, which you're doing. The proposed drive-on-a-garage conforms to the requirement that the enclosed area is unfinished or flood-resistant, usable solely for parking of vehicles, building access or storage. And the foundation will require flood openings. This will be confirmed during the building permit application process.
It appears to me that Mr. Bergeron is pretty much tied into what he can do with this piece of property by state and federal rules and regulations.
And that's why, and that's why it's a special exception.
Yeah.
So, yeah. So we'll walk through, just, you did provide some comments on the special exception criteria. There are five criteria. In this case, you're looking for an exception from 14.7.3 to redevelop this lot. You're talking that the specific site is an appropriate location for such use, being consistent with the town's current master plan. You say there's a house there now. The size or frequency of the use will not significantly alter the character of the neighborhood. In fact, you're rebuilding with a new house. The use will not create a nuisance or hazard. The new size will set house back from the road 10 feet. The proposed location is of sufficient size to allow for adequate and appropriate facilities, that city, water and septic are there. Shoreline permit application has been submitted to state. So right now, are you hooked up with city?
Uh, I think you read that wrong. There's a septic, there's private septic there. The city water is down there now.
Are there?
Yes, I haven't hooked up yet because there's nothing to hook to.
Okay. Got it. Right, that...
Once I build the new house, I will tie into the city water.
Okay. And that the proposed location is of sufficient size to allow for appropriate buffers of this use to adjacent properties.
I have a question. Do you have to hitch up to the...
No.
Okay.
I do not, but I believe you still have to pay? Is that how that works?
There's a betterment assessment that is charged to every property owner there, regardless of whether they hook up or not. So he would be charged with betterment assessment.
There's a betterment and then there's the hookup charge.
Yeah, and then there's, if, if somebody chooses to hook up, they have to...
If you didn't hook up, where would you get your water?
There's a well, there's an existing artesian well there now, but...
Yeah.
Off of water, city water, hmm, it's kinda...
They're a choice.
Yeah. We'll hook into the city water.
Anyone have any further questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on behalf of the applicant in favor of this application? Any interested parties? Anyone here to speak against this application or interested parties? And did I leave anybody out that'd like to speak to it? Alright, any other questions for the applicant before we close the public hearing? Okay, we're gonna close the public hearing and deliberates. Any comments, motions, deliberations?
Pick a motion to accept with the caveat that, uh, the, am I looking for? Yeah, shoreline.
Protection.
Right. Shoreline protection, come back with an approval. Shoreline permit for construction is approved. So motion to accept pending the shoreline permit approval.
Second, okay.
Okay. What would happen if, what happens to the rights of the person if the shoreline protection fails? If they're denied the shoreline permit, there's a, there's an appeal process through the state that I'm not very aware of and I could say, I would say that they could always, if they need a clarification, could come back to this board. We would not issue a building permit within the protected shoreline unless a shoreline permit is issued. We hold permits until we see proof of that.
And I think, if I, I would, I would assume, I'm not, but I would assume that his options could be either appeal it or come up with a new design that might be more approvable by shoreline.
Correct, and if he came up with a new design that was materially different, he would have to come back before this board. Okay. Yeah, I'm just wondering if tying him is necessary? If tying the shoreline permit acceptance is necessary for the actions of this board?
I, I don't think making him a mention of it or a condition will affect it one way or the other. Not, not including that condition or including it. It wouldn't change the way we handle it upstairs.
I'd leave it in the motion just...
Alright, alright. Any further discussion? Alright, we have a motion on the table to approve the special exception with the condition that it meet the requirements and gain shoreline protection acceptance. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or abstained? Five, zero, zero. Alright, we're on to the next application. Are we okay? No breaks required yet?
No, we'll go right along.
We know we have a full agenda this evening, so we still miss one plus one, two.
For, uh, one, two, three.
And then there's a couple of discussion issues after that.
Yeah, we...
Derek.
There we go.
The land event.
Goffstown Harvest Christian Church, applicant, is seeking a variance to allow the construction of a church in an industrial district. The variance is required because Section 3.10.1.7 of the zoning ordinance prohibits churches in the industrial district. The applicant is also seeking a variance to allow a steeple that will exceed the maximum allowable height of 45 feet, provided by Section 4.3 of the zoning ordinance. The proposed steeple will measure 63 feet 8 inches high to the peak of the steeple and have a building height of 59 feet, mean height between the roof ridge and peak, as defined by the zoning ordinance. Similar variances were requested and conditionally approved June 3, 2008, but became null and void on Ju-, June 3, 2010 because active and substantial development did not occur in accordance with Section 15.3.1.3 of the zoning ordinance. Property is located on, code, I can, somebody's got the...
Cody.
Cody Lane and Daniel Plummer Road, which is map three, lock 32A, in an industrial district. Prior to the public hearing, the ZBA needs to vote on regional impact. On this one, Derek recommended that it does not have regional impact.
Well, I'll just say that when this was in front of the zoning board before, they did, they did vote that it did have a regional impact.
Do you remember what, what the reasoning for that was?
Because of the traffic that would be flowing in and out of the church wouldn't just come from the neighborhood per se, it would be coming from surrounding towns, could affect the Bedford area. I think primarily that was it because it wasn't just, you know, a resident of, it was, would be drawing from surrounding towns. And there was some discussion about a possible amphitheater and that the traffic would not particularly be just for weekend use. The church could be used not only just for weekend services, but a church can also be used during the week for weddings and additional types of services that churches do provide to communities. So that's, I believe that's pretty much what the discussion was about the regional impact before.
Okay. Let's, uh, so let's walk through what Derek spoke to because he actually made some highlights to the criteria, not the criteria, but the impact statements.
Yeah, on the, on the back of my staff report, you'll see the development of regional impact. The first portion comes from the state RSA and then the second portion is from the guidelines provided by Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission. It's on the rear of the, and I showed the one that was, may have been a concern was the proximity to borders of the neighboring computer, or communities and just using Google Maps to show how, how far it is using the ro-, existing roadways, how far it would be. And then the concern about vehicle trips. In 2008, the church did provide a traffic study that noted that there'd be 157 peak hour vehicle trips, but that was the one day a week on Sunday. And Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission guidelines state that when a proposed development generate 100 or more vehicle trips per day into an adjacent community. And again, it's your, your decision on how you'd like to do it and if there's any doubt, the RSA does say that if there's any doubt that you should err on the side of doing a development of regional impact. But I guess my feeling was 157 peak at, at one time is not necessarily into one of the neighboring communities. They would disperse from there. Again, it's up for the, the board to decide.
Manchester, Bedford, Goffstown, where, okay. Alright, any discussion or motions on regional impact?
I'll move to find that it has no regional impact.
I'll second.
In accordance with Derek's.
I'll second.
Any discussion on that motion that it does not have regional impact? Okay, with that, there is a vote, or a motion on the floor that says this application has no regional impact with a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you.
How did you vote, Vivian?
I, I don't understand when he said that we have to err on the side of the RSA.
If you look at, um, under RSA, I'm sorry, 3654, I just wanna find the correct, uh, colon 56. It talks about, um, under the first portion, that a local land use board, upon receipt of an application, shall review it and determine whether or not the development could be construed as having potential for regional impact. Doubt concerning regional impact shall be resolved in a determination that the development has a potential regional impact. So i- if there is doubt, it does, the state statute directs the land use boards to make a finding that it does have regional impact.
So they have two if's over here, well, about the...
I don't know if they were if's, but I think those were some of the issues that were raised in 2008 and that's why I chose to highlight those two issues.
I'm going to, I'll vote no because I don't really, I don't know the whole story yet. So either abstain probably would be the best thing. I don't have the whole history behind it, so...
Oh, well, you don't have to, the history behind the application? Yeah, you don't have to have that yet because they, they're need to re-present it tonight. So you basically just work...
It's a whole new application.
Yeah, it's a whole new application.
The last one's a moot point, we're starting from scratch.
So you're just going off of what was presented to you and the materials provided by Derek?
Alright, so I'll vote no because it's my feeling right now.
Uh, the vote was three to two, that the vote was that it does not have regional impact. That's something that always, if they can be appealed, you know, by the applicant or butters and we would have to deal with that at that point. Okay, with that, we have found, so we can proceed. Do we have someone here that's gonna speak on behalf of the church or the applicant?
Yes, Michael Tierney of the firm Wadley Starr &amp; Peters for Goffstown Harvest Christian Church House. I have the pastor of the church, Pastor Joe here with me today. Pastor Joe John K., John's sake, I'm sorry.
What's the law firm you're with, please?
Wadley Starr &amp; Peters. We're here today...
Your last name again? Okay.
We're here today asking for the extension or the renewal of use variances and a height variance that was previously granted in 2008. To give a little history of the application, prior to the purchase of this property, the church investigated and determined that the zoning ordinance at the time required a special exception in order for a church to be located in the industrial zone. The church went ahead and obtained a special exception prior to signing the purchase and sale and actually obtaining the property. Subsequent to that special exception and subsequent to purchasing the property, we then submitted a site plan application to the planning board. It was determined that due to differences between the site plan application and the original general idea that was considered in the special exception, that we would need to obtain a variance due to a change in the zoning ordinance in 2008 that changed it from requiring a special exception for churches in the industrial zone to having no churches in the industrial zone. That was in 2008. So we went ahead and we obtained a variance in 2008. We then went and went through the site plan approval process with the planning board and got our final signature for site plan approval in November 2009. As everybody knows, it's been a pretty hard economy for all sorts of development and churches are not outside the realm of the tough economy that we're in. Therefore, we've had a little bit of difficulty getting started as quickly as we initially anticipated and we're requesting an extension or a renewal of the variances granted in 2008. Since the time that those variances were granted back in 2008, the neighborhood has not changed. There's been no change in our reasonings or our rationale for the granting of those variances and so you'll see that when we go through the five-part test for the granting of a variance, it's substantially similar to what was presented in 2008.
And you're aware that there is no distinction between use or area variance anymore? It's all just variance, correct?
Correct. I, I'm just making clear that we're requesting a variance for the church use and we're also requesting a variance to have a steeple of 63 feet 8 inches.
Okay.
If we walk through the five criteria...
And which one are you gonna look at first?
The church use. The first criteria is whether granting the variance would be contrary to the public interest and we argue that churches are a vital part of any community and this church is presently in this community renting a location approximately a half mile away. There's no public interest that's going to be adversely affected by the granting of this variance. Churches are a positive effect on the community. It will be a positive effect on the immediate neighborhood of this particular location. The spirit of the ordinance is going to be observed primarily because churches had been permitted for a long time, including the time at which we had purchased the property, including the time at which we obtained our special exception and it was only after we had obtained that special exception that the ordinance was changed in 2008 to require a variance. And we had obtained those variances in 2008. The granting of the variance will do substantial justice because this is a application which has been before the board before. We have obtained our site plan approval. It is only the economy which has prevented us from being able to obtain that building permit and get into the ground and start digging with our project and that's why we're requesting the additional time here today. There's no issue that values of properties will be affected at all. The abutting property owners include vacant industrial lots as well as commercial properties. I believe one of the abutting properties is a industrial property that may be in use, but there are vacant and in-use commercial and industrial properties. There are no residential properties... There are no residential properties on our side of Route 114, the other side of Route 114, some distance away, there are residential properties, but none abutting. The literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship, because previously, churches had been allowed in the industrial zone by special exception, we had actually obtained a special exception, and it was after we obtained that special exception, and while we were going through the site plan approval process, that the ordinance was then changed to require a variance, and we did actually go forth and get a variance in 2008, and get our final sub-site plan approval in November of 2009. The use will not adversely affect the neighborhood at all, this is something that a prior variance had been granted for, and there had been no evidence that a church in this neighborhood is going to negatively affect the commercial or the industrial usage which are budding this property. If the board would like, I'll just go right on to the five criteria for the steeple height, we're also seeking a variance in order to have a steeple of a height of sixty-three point eight. I apologize, I don't have the height of other steeples in town of churches that were built a long time before this church, but there are other steeples which are taller height. Most churches have a steeple as part of their traditional architecture, that is something which one typically expects in a traditionally styled, architecturally styled house of worship, and there are numerous steeples here in Goffstown. The spirit of the ordinance is observed, because this steeple is not going to be an occupied structure, the height limitation is about protecting the health and safety, particularly when it comes to a fire or somebody who's going to be at such a height that there would be a danger to that person, and that's not going to be the case with an unoccupied steeple. That's why you see in many zoning ordinances, that there's an express exception for unoccupied steeples. Goffstown zoning ordinance doesn't have that express exception for an unoccupied steeple, and that's why we're here asking for an extension of our variance today. There will be substantial justice, because this variance to allow a steeple will be keeping in line with the traditional architecture of churches that have traditional steeples attached to the church. The surrounding properties are not going to be diminished by a sixty-three foot steeple, it's a five acre property, it's off of 114, it is budded by commercial and industrial properties, none of which are going to be affected by the location of a steeple. The maximum building height, as I said, has its purpose in protecting health and safety and limitations of fire apparatus, that's not an issue when you have an unoccupied steeple, and so there's not going to be any issue with the health or safety, and there will be no need to enforce the ordinance, protect the purposes of the ordinance for an unoccupied structure such as a steeple. Churches have traditionally had steeples, and it will be keeping in line with churches around Goffstown, and quite frankly, around all of New England that have traditional church steeples. So with that, I open up to any questions from the board.
Board, any questions?
On the original special exception, right, is what they originally got.
It's got a long history, so.
Yeah, and then they got a variance in '08.
Correct.
On that variance, which I didn't, I didn't see a copy of the CBA's decision, unless there is one in here that I.
There was not one included, I treated it as a new application.
That's, I, I think that's what we really need to do, I mean, the applicant was referring earlier to.
Yeah, to extensions, that was the other thing I wanted to mention, was that this is not an extension.
This is a brand-new application, because the other one lapsed, and there are new criteria, and that's what we need to address. We can't, you know, we don't need to look at the past decision or anything, we go on what's before us.
It's got a lot of history, so.
Yeah.
Things change and everything.
So you need to look at it fresh.
Okay, so in that case.
You could ask.
My next question was, were there any conditions attached to that, that variance, but if we're not.
No, it doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
It's best that you don't know.
Okay.
For what it is worth, I don't see that there's any difference between an extension or a new application, because we do meet the criteria for a variance under the new steps, but we were informed by the town when we requested information regarding what next step we need to take, that we had until November of 2010 to get that extension, and there may have been a miscommunication or an oversight, and for that I apologize, but that's why I've been speaking about this in terms of an extension, but I don't think there's any real need to not consider this as a new application where we meet the variance criteria.
Do you have a who that told you that?
Well, they currently have submitted an application for site plan extension, and when that application came in, it was raised, well, when did they get the variance, and is the variance still valid, and that's when we discovered.
Right.
Under our zoning ordinance, it's no longer valid.
Correct.
So there's a difference between the site plan extension request and the zoning, the variance request that you're continuing, you're asking for now, because what you've got before was a special exception, that's not what you're looking for now. The site plan extension is planning board, that's a whole different, whole different ballgame, and so here, it's an entirely new application, strictly variance, and strictly whatever criteria is addressed here tonight, and some of it may be the same as last time, but it's new board members, new, you know, like you said, some of the ordinances have changed, so that's what we have to go by. It's not an extension, the site plan might be an extension, but this isn't, because it lapses.
So any questions on the application?
Well, I, I would just, for a procedural aspect, think that we should look at the variance for the church prior to going into the variance for the steeple.
Sure. I, I'm good with that, yeah.
Yeah, because why look at the steeple?
What's the steeple if we don't have a church?
If you don't get through the threshold of the church.
Correct, and, and I, I'm not anywhere yet on the variance of the church.
Do you have any questions on the applicant right now?
I have a question. I have a question, it says that churches have long been permitted in industrial zone, is that in this town that's been permitted in industrial zone?
No.
They were permitted until 2008, when there was a change.
With a special exception.
With a special exception, they weren't permitted by right, they're permitted by special exception.
Do we have any in industrial zone churches?
Looking at the map behind you, that shows where some of the industrial districts are. None that I can think of, but I, I don't want to say definitively.
That's tough.
Because I know there are some on Daniel Plummer, there, you know, the, there is one on Daniel Plummer Road, I don't know the zoning of that particular lot. There are.
Potential?
Yes, I believe many of the churches in town were built prior to some of the designations of the industrial zone.
That church would either be in commercial or residential that you're speaking of.
Yep.
Okay. Industrial is on the other side of the road that they're applying for.
So it's residential? I'm thinking.
I think it's residential.
That it's residential, just by given, by the nature of what's around it, but I'm not sure.
It's pretty close, there's a, there's a wedge of commercial right there.
It'd be in the residential two district, the one that I was thinking of, directly across from the industrial district.
So the answer is, we don't know.
Right, but I, I, I believe that there was never any church built in the industrial zone, because if you notice, well, the churches are, as in town, the residential one, and the residential two, and then you have down to the Henry Bridge, which is residential. So I, I, I don't see where you say in the past that this property was a residential, and now turned to residential.
I, I, what I said, what I meant, and I apologize if I wasn't clear, was that until 2008, churches were permitted in the industrial zone by special exception, and I believe it was our obtaining of a special exception that prompted the town to consider that they didn't want to have churches in the industrial zone any further, and it was our application and special exception for a church in the industrial zone that caused the town to say, okay, we, no more after this one.
And I'd probably make a point that it probably wasn't because they didn't want your church or a church in the industrial zone, I think they looked at it from a, what do we want best use of our industrial zones for, because in this case, it's not an industrial purpose, so I, I think that's part of the discussion argument, and that's what would be nice to, if you heard from the planning board, to say, what was the intent of the zoning ordinance?
What the, go ahead. Would I understand the number one issue with that particular amendment or that particular ordinance, is that we, this town historically defined the industrial zones in this town, and those were done as tax revenue parcels of land.
Right.
And churches are non-taxable entities, so therefore, that is my belief from, from discussions that were had at that time, that they did not want to give up tax revenue land for non-taxable entities.
And that we have very limited amount of industrial property.
Correct.
So those two pieces together.
I know that at, at points mitigation was discussed, you know, if, if one was to take a piece of industrial land for a non-taxable entity, was there any other parcel of land that they, non-taxable entity might want to mitigate to the town for industrial usage, so that, 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 because it's all part of the calculation of tax revenue if and when they are developed, and industrial obviously is a, is a tax revenue parcel of land that offsets your tax expenses, your, your residential costs and tax rate.
Tax rate.
Okay, so questions of the applicant, or?
Well, I just want to comment about what you two just said, having been the recording secretary as well for the planning board, when they went before the planning board for their site plan application, and when the planning board addressed the zoning changes, that's pretty much what they said, you know, they wanted to maintain the industrial property that we had, because it is so limited.
Okay. So questions of the applicant, is there any questions about the application?
Yes. You had made a comment about the surrounding properties.
Yes.
And I wanted to know, you, you commented about across 114, there's some residential properties.
Zoned residential.
Right.
I don't believe they're developed.
Across 114?
I don't, not right on 114, is, is what I'm saying.
Not right on, but there are some.
Correct.
Right, and what about the residential properties that are on St. Ace's Drive? How close are they in proximity to, to this?
I don't believe in, if I could get this map, that's, I saw right behind me here. I saw this when I walked in, and I thought this might be the easiest way to show it. The lot, is this lot right there? Kind of a funny shape there, and it's budding, you know, some commercial properties, some industrial properties, you need to go over 114 before you hit any residential properties, and as far as the St. Ace's property, the residential properties that are in St. Ace's, it's past a couple large commercial lots before you get to the residential lots that are in St. Ace's Drives. St. Ace's Drive, and these commercial properties are both vacant, I believe, as of right now.
You're talking about, was it Benchmark or something that's there?
Yeah.
Because there's a couple that are right adjacent to Bench, is it Benchmark?
Yeah.
There's a couple that are right adjacent to there.
St. Ace's.
The one that actually abuts is actually owned by St. Anselms College, it's a, it's zone commercial, it's right there, it's along 114 and St. Ace's Drive. I don't recall who the next commercial parcel is, but you need to go two commercial parcels in before you start hitting these residential properties on St. Ace's Drive.
And Vivian, and everyone, in the back of your zoning ordinance, there's a map that is probably, it's a little closer and a little more detailed than what he had up, that you could see that the piece of property that they're speaking to.
In the back of what?
In our zoning ordinance.
Oh, yeah.
There is one in the back?
Yes.
Yeah, right here.
The fold out.
Because I, I, I'm saying, I'm saying to myself, I went through this.
What about, so apparently, the house that's on the corner there.
The one that's, there's one that's building like a new.
There's a house, it's like a multifamily house that's on a, on the corner there.
Oh, yeah, the one right there on the corner, Daniel Plummer, and yes, there's that one.
Val used to own that developing.
And there's a multifamily on the corner, right there, I mean, I was actually thinking of houses on the other side of St. Ace's, on the opposite side.
So that house is actually a commercial, but the, all the property on the other side of Cody Avenue, except for what appears to be that, whatever, most of the property on the other side of Cody Avenue appears to be residential, too.
Okay.
I'm just getting my bearings here, because it, you know.
Other questions?
I don't want to get into site plan issues, however, when you talk about the surrounding properties, I'm not as convinced as you are that they're not close enough to be concerned about, and I'm a little concerned about lighting and the noise, that would be whatever noise from outside activities that you might have, lighting even from the steeple or from the parking lots and things like that, that are going to affect the neighborhood.
And my response would be that those issues were addressed at the site plan approval process, that's my understanding, is that they were addressed at site plan approval process, and that the presence of 114 separating the proposed churches, the proposed church building, and those residential properties to which you address, do a lot to mitigate any of those concerns.
Well, they are, in detail, they are site plan issues, but as they pertain to the zoning ordinance, we need to address them as well, so, and I'm not concerned just for those on 114, but I'm also concerned for those on St. Anselms Drive.
The residential properties, just.
Yes.
Other questions?
I'd like, I'd like, I guess my, I, I would like to know why you would feel that this is in the spirit of the ordinance, is when we specifically in this town have stated that we did not want churches in industrially zoned property areas, why would you consider it to still be in the spirit of the ordinance?
It would still be in the spirit of the ordinance, because this particular lot had previously obtained a special exception prior to the change in the ordinance.
You're going on the continuance, which we said, that, I, I understand your, your answer, and I thank you for it.
Other questions? So again, the five criteria, we're not deliberating, obviously, but the criteria of public interest, spirit of the ordinance, and the gale you're getting at, diminishment of surrounding property values, is that the line of questioning?
Yep.
Substantial justice, and then why this property? So I'm going to, a couple of questions, one, I have the same question as Ms. Hooton did regarding the spirit of the ordinance, I look at it as, we, the town specifically rebuked this kind of effort because of that, and that you would have, there's a high hurdle to meet of, when we just changed the ordinance to say churches are not allowed in there, you come to me for a variance that says, but I, but I want to be in there, and, and you use it, that we had it there before, I think that's a high, high hurdle to meet. So I think you're going to have to talk to me about the hardship criteria, you've got to tell me about this property, you've got to tell me about what use this property would be to use as the church. You've got to tell me about what use this property would be to use, as the church is the owner, if you couldn't build a church on it, what use of this property is to any other owner on it, site conditions, layout, unattractiveness, number of other properties. You've got to tell me about this piece of property and why it's distinctive from other industrial parcels in that area that makes this the perfect candidate for a church and nothing else. Can you make that case?
I would respond that I don't think, well, let me respond first with, as far as the spirit of the ordinance, I think we need to look at what the New Hampshire Supreme Court said in the Malaki Glen v. Chichester case, because what happened in that case is that the Chichester ZBA made the argument that they couldn't grant a variance because it was prohibited by the zoning ordinance, which is very similar to, I think, the argument that I'm hearing today. And that went up to the New Hampshire Supreme Court, and the New Hampshire Supreme Court clarified that in order to deny a variance because something is prohibited, it needs to be against the intent, the spirit, the purpose, and you need to really look at what this ordinance was trying to accomplish. Now, in the case of a church being located in an industrial zone, we need to look at why a church would be in industrial zone in this particular instance. As you were saying, we can't be focusing on the town, why we need to look at the particulars. And in the particulars, we have quite a significant hardship in that we have a diligent church who had done its homework, had obtained that special exception prior to signing on the purchase and sale, had paid for this property, obtained this property, only to find out that after obtaining the special exception, the town decided it didn't want churches anymore in the industrial zone. And I think that that's really very important to remember is that we had obtained the special exception and then had the zoning ordinance changed. Now, we went, we got the variance because when we went for the site plan review, the planning board determined that there were some changes between what our initial broad concept was and what our final put down on paper plan actually was, what we're wanting to build right now today. There is a great hardship whenever a town goes and changes a zoning ordinance when there's a known applicant for a particular piece of property. And that was very much the case in this circumstance. It would be a very different issue if we came in here today in 2010, knowing that the zoning ordinance said that churches are not allowed in the industrial zone, and went willy-nilly and bought a piece of property, and then came and asked for a variance. But that isn't at all what happened. We bought this property with the intent of building this church, that's what, we are, we're a church, at the time when it was permitted by special exception. And so there is a huge, huge negative hardship on the church should the church be denied the permission to build after it has not only purchased the property and obtained site plan approval, has gotten everything in line for this particular church to be built, when the benefit to the town is purely the town's desire to keep out as many tax exempt properties as possible. And that's really, when you look at it, is pales in comparison to the benefit, to the detriment to the church if the church isn't allowed to build.
Now, that was good two minutes, but you missed a couple of key points in there that changed the story. And I'm not going to argue, I'm only going to say your argument, you're arguing to substantial justice, okay? That's one of the other five criteria, that's just as important as the other four. But when you stated that the town granted a special exception and changed its mind when the variance criteria came out, you missed the point was, yes, the town gave you a special exception, you went to the planning board, the planning board was doing its thing, and lo and behold, we determined that there was a substantial change to the plan. And at that point, a determination was made, because the plan had changed, you had to go back to the ZBA. By the time you went back to the ZBA, the town had already opened up and considered an option for the zoning amendment, which then would have to apply. And so you erased your own special exception and had to then seek a variance, which you did get, which you did get, and you could have asked for a continuance on that, but it wasn't done. So when we are now looking at is a separate application, we understand it's been a long history, special exception was awarded, history created the need to get a variance, a variance was awarded. So when we start battling on substantial justice, we can speak to that. I am, and then going back again to the spirit of the ordinance thing, I'm not erasing the requirement and understanding that the Supreme Court of New Hampshire says, just because it's not allowed, you can't say it's not allowed. However, I stated it's a high bar to meet, as every one of these things are, it's high bars. Doesn't say we put up a roadblock. And then, so I still go back to my question is, I understand the point, and both that and substantial justice, why is this piece of property that if we were to strictly apply the zoning ordinance as applied to this piece of property to your application, and the fact that you can't build a church there, that it's left for industrial use, why is this piece of property unique that you own? Why is it unique that what you want to do on it is really all you can do, is all that you want to do, and it's not right for another purpose? That's what I'm trying to get. Because this is a new application, it is not a continuance of the old application. You have to describe to me why this piece of property is right for you.
This piece of property is in the industrial zone, is a five acre piece of property, and I think its uniqueness is because of the history and the ownership of it. I don't believe that there is any particular quality other than the fact that it is not uniquely, it is not very well suited to industrial usage due to, I don't believe it has very good access for town water. And I could be misspeaking, whether it's water or sewage, but there's one of those that it's not able to support a large industrial use. Adjacent to this property is a vacant industrial property. There's no great push to have this developed. There's also an adjacent commercial property, which is also vacant. The church seeks to develop this property, and between two vacant pieces, that there's no guarantee that if the church wasn't able to build this and they put it on the market, that there'd be anybody knocking on the door to buy this property. There's no calls coming in because this property has some great use for anything other than a church. Does that answer your question?
You're on the right line. So you're talking about size of buildings, that it, you know, that this is, would be limited to a small industrial complex if somebody were to buy it? Is that appropriate statement to make, that it's not very large, it's not conducive to industrial type traffic?
It is not, that is a very good point. The Cody Drive is conducive to having the traffic of a church that's going to have rather light vehicles going on it. The trucking of the warehouse, which is a couple properties north, is not something that can be doubled or tripled if all three properties were to have equivalent trucking due to the nature of the road. And that's something that I believe the traffic engineers had addressed in more detail, but I don't have the traffic engineers with me here tonight. So I apologize, other than referring you to the planning board's record.
Other questions of the applicant?
I just want to clarify two statements he made. You said that, you know, if it came to nitty gritty, that the town has said, and you quote, any more churches in industrial zone. And I say, there is no churches in industrial zone. So the town didn't say not any more churches, they said, no churches in industrial zone. Then you said, the town will say, says, we don't want any more tax exempt property. That's not true. That's not true. Any residential or whatever, wherever the church is allowed, the town will accept. So that's not what the town said, no more tax exempt property. That's, would be a misconception.
I'll just speak to the issue of the sewer. And there is no sewer that is connected up Daniel Plummer at this time to accommodate the businesses that are on there. However, we are bringing sewer up to the intersection of Daniel Plummer Road, and we are enlarging the lines to add more capacity for additional lines to be constructed. And this area is one of the areas that the commission is looking at. There is also a sleeve that goes from the 114, 114A intersection down 114 up, I don't know if it goes up to Benchmark, but it, it goes up there, and there's, there is a sleeve that is existing for a sewer line to go into. So there is preliminary plans that are being developed right now in getting sewer into the, into the industrial area because it is considered one of the, this whole area is considered one of the larger industrial areas in the town. So with that, I'll just make that statement because you had mentioned about water and sewer. I can't speak for the water, I don't know what that issue is.
Okay. I'm going to close up my questions, going back to the hardship criteria. So the hardship criteria now has an A and or, and a B paragraph.
Correct.
The A one is talking about, tell me why this piece of property is special, that distinguishes from other properties. And then criteria B is, as an owner of the property, that if you can't establish Part A, what is the hardship that you as the owner could or couldn't do, or would or can't do with that piece of property? Is it beneficial to you in any way if you can't build a church on it?
No, a church is in the business of having a church. There are many ministries that the church has, but the central ministry of the church is the worship aspect, the house of worship. And so without the variance, a church would be forced to sell the property to somebody who would have an industrial use. And while I understand that there is the potential for bringing a sewer line to have that possibility, as of this time, the market for an industrial property is not very good. And the church stands not only lose all of the time, effort, and expense it put into obtaining the approvals thus far, but also the value of the very property itself.
Any other questions of the applicant? Okay, so let's, let's just address, before we make a vote or any motions on that, the steeple portion. Any questions on the steeple portion of the application? If we can deliberate it all as one.
Yes, I'd like to know why you feel that you need to have a steeple that exceeds the limitations of our ordinances.
There's no provision in the Goff's Town ordinance for a steeple. That's one way in which the Goff's Town ordinance, I believe, is different than many other towns. I don't believe that the, that Goff's Town intended anything by not having the steeple provision that is found in many other towns. I believe that the height limitation goes to fire safety, and that it is not an issue that fire safety when that steeple is unoccupied.
Is there any consideration for putting broadcasting equipment or cell power equipment in this steeple?
No, there was no consideration of that, there's no plan to do that, no.
What, what is planned to go in the steeple?
I'm going to actually defer to the pastor and ask him to come up here, if you don't mind one second. The steeple will be an unoccupied steeple, and.
Children that misbehave in children's church will go up there.
That is a joke.
It's in the record.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Pastor Joe, but there is not going to be anything in the steeple.
No, those are one of the things we agreed to, that we weren't putting up there. The size of the steeple is proportionate to the design of the building, that's it. That's where the number came from, it's just proportionate to the design of the building.
So there's going to be no lights and no equipment and no bell?
No bell, no.
Just a plain hall steeple?
Yeah, to be consistent with the New England style church.
I would think a bell would be consistent.
Me too.
No lights, inside or out?
I believe there's, what would they call it, not an atmosphere light, but just maybe a.
An uplight?
Is that what, that would be called more for atmosphere? And I'm trying to think of the technical.
From the ground up towards the steeple?
No, not the ground, I think it would be on the base of the steeple, giving it just like a shine. It's not shining out to neighborhoods or anything like that. I guess the best picture you get is on a Christmas card, when you saw the light of the steeple, nothing's beaming out, it's lighting that up. And that's in the, I don't remember. There was a big discussion on that, that was actually brought up at one of the meetings. People were, there was those concerned that this light's going to go into neighborhoods and all this. I was like, wait a minute, that's not what we're doing. It's just on there to make the building aesthetically nice, that's it.
Is, have we done, have you been able to determine if the steeple would be visible from 114 or from Daniel Plummer or from St. A's Drive?
I don't believe there's been any balloon test or anything like that to determine its visibility, no.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question? Where on the site plan is your church going to be placed? And the reason I ask that question is, when you have something of that great height, the question is, if, if it was to fall, would it fall on somebody else's property?
It most certainly will not fall on somebody else's property. If you give me one second, I'll just get out the plan that shows exactly where it's located.
I don't see where it is, that's why. That's where the building is. Just wanted to see if it was.
So the steeple's right here in front of the church, and so the closest property line would be on the complete other side of the building, over there.
And that's the closest property line? This is 114?
No, this is 114 right here.
Oh, this is.
Okay, but the steeple's going to be right here, okay? And the steeple's going to be approximately, you know, 20 feet higher than the building. And the building is significantly bigger than 20 feet. So if the steeple fell, the.
Either way.
It wouldn't be anywhere near the property line.
This way or that way?
Right.
Because I think that's one of the concerns that.
Many towns have formulas for the building of steeples, that you can't have a property line one and a half times the height of the steeple. And it isn't even close in this case, the steeple isn't anywhere near the property line.
All right, thank you.
So they actually do look at them the same as it they are, as if they're towers?
Yep. Correct.
Didn't expect that. Other questions of the applicant? All right. Thank you. Is there anyone here that is wanting to speak on behalf of the application?
May I say some things?
Sure. Are they contributing, you can come forward, are they contributing to the application? Yes.
Pastor Joe Johnsek. One of the things, and forgive me if I'm not a lawyer, so if I misstate some things, we can yell at my buddy here. But I, I really want to bring up how important this is to our church, and we can say that it's a new application and all that, but we all have to, we all agree that history records show that based on certain premises, we purchased this land. And it's cost us a lot of money, a lot of dedication, a lot of time. We've got between, with monies in hand and dedicated monies, we've got over $120,000 put aside to do, this economy has been terrible, but even with that, in the past year, we've been able to raise that money and put it aside. And for four years, oh, and that's what I was going to bring up too, the property, and I know that it's zoned industrial, but it can be zoned whatever it wants. If no one wants to buy it, then what good is it going to do the town? So going back to the hardship on us, the monies that we've expended, the time we've expended, the fact is, is when I talked to the, and we got a really good price on that thing, the fellow that owned it before, I think the initial price was like one point something, and if you can look at the records, you know we got it for $490,000. Why? Because he couldn't sell it. So if this was not to go through, I'm stuck with properties. I've already spent almost $100,000 of my people's money for site plans. I've already spent almost $100,000 of my people's money for site plans, engineering, pictures, our time, our lawyers. So I spent their money. We've raised this money here based on, and again, new application, but history shows these are the things that happened to allow us to go into these things. As a nonprofit organization, it's very, very difficult. I don't, I can't give pink slips to people. I don't have people that, I have a couple employees and that's it. When people give their money, they're doing it based on the premise that we're gonna accomplish something bigger than they are. And so now, as a church, and I know as a town, you're trying to protect the town, I get it. I owned a, I owned a company for eight years. I understand monies, I understand business. But as a church and representing about 180 people, all right? We have to go back and have a piece of property, should this get denied, back to the hardship issue. And I have to explain to these people why 250, $300,000 of our hard- hard-earned money is up in, in case we, unless we can sell it, is just gone. It's history. And that makes it very, very difficult as someone representing these people. I gotta tell you, that would break my heart, let alone a lot of our patrons here in Goffstown. And so I wanted to bring that up, especially with selling the property. For, I think the fellow that owned it beforehand was going through the history and, and all, but that sat empty for 20 some, 20 years, I think was, I, I'm trying to, this is four years ago now. He couldn't sell it, and that's why we got it at half price. So it can be called industrial, but if no one's gonna put anything on it, then I'm stuck with this property. I'm pay, times are tough anyway. So we're paying the note on that thing, we're paying you, the, the town $6,000, $7,000 a year on the taxes on it. So we have all these expenses that were given toward this property. And if we get denied this thing, you know, I, I can pray and I'm sure things will work out. But I've got this land that if a businessman, and I'm not in business anymore, I talk to people and I help them out. All right, I'm not in business anymore. But if a businessman who bought that property, and I don't know how many people before him, couldn't turn that over, I don't know how I'm gonna do a better job than him. So that's all I wanted to say as far as addressing the hardship issue. I hope I didn't say anything wrong or out of place.
Can I ask a question?
Yes ma'am.
You said it sat for 20 years empty. Was he actively trying to sell it for those 20 years?
Absolutely. Well, th- th- this is, and again, and, and I said it was four years ago, so if I had some of the figures messed up. This is what he told me. And was it, is it Brad Veer? I, I can't think, I can't even remember the guy's name now, but that was his issue. He bought the property specifically as an investment to sell it. And after X amount of years, he cou- he, he couldn't sell it. And that's why we got it at half price. And whatever, you all would know the numbers more than I would, there was nothing on it. I don't know how long it was zoned industrial, but it's an empty space and it's been there a long time. And I'm working with Lance Cody, he's our neighbor right now. And so we've talked about a, a number of things with business and things that just couldn't work out because of X, Y, and Z. So for us, I look at it, I'm a see spot run kinda guy. If a businessman couldn't get rid of it, and he couldn't turn it over to make a po- a profit, now I've got 180 parishioners that I've gotta figure out what to do with this thing. So I guess to keep it simple, that's where I'd be coming from on that.
I, I understand your point, and your point's well taken Pastor, but I also understand that three quarters of that Daniel Plummer Road is developed to commercial. And obviously, there are a lot of things that enter into whether something sells or doesn't. What the original owner was asking for the property could have been a deciding factor as to whether or not it sold.
Oh, sure, I understand that.
Because obviously, three quarters of the rest of the street sold. And he has commercial property on it. So when, and, and I understand what you're saying, but I just, there are other extenuating circumstances in purchase and sales other than the fact you have a good economic climate and you don't have, you, you don't have an economic climate. So with that statement, I, I, I will, I will say that perhaps there were other circumstances about this particular property that were reasons that it did not sell. I think there wa- was in the past some ideas that this town entertained for its usage, which was not accepted by the town. I think we were, we were looking at it for the wheel operator issue, some of this property. And that didn't occur, and that didn't occur because the town voted for it not to occur. And that was their decision to vote for it not to occur, occur for the re, for, for s- certain reasons. So with that all being said and done, I, I understand your hardship, but I, you're, you're, if you got it for half price, because it was such a good deal, maybe he was, and he was offering it for twice as much, you might have answered the question as to why it didn't sell prior to you getting it for half price. But I'm just saying, I'm just putting that out there. With your, members of your church, I can say to you that there's a church for sale right here in the center of town. That's right next to Sully's, which has been for sale for a couple of months now. If the intent is to have a, a church other than your present location, that, that's available too. But I'm having, I am definitely struggling with the issue that it's industrial, industrial zone property.
Any other, anyone else have questions for the pastor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here speaking on behalf of the applicant? Please come forward, state your name, smile for the camera.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm David Pierce. I'm a resident of Goffstown. I live on 21 Mill Street. I, I am a member of the Goffstown Harvest Christian Church, so you can presume that I'm favorable towards the progress of getting a, a structure built. Since I know about the ability of the, the church and the congregation to proceed with building, and knowing the, the history of the approvals to get to where we were, seven months ago, I was concerned about the deadlines that are approaching to take the next step. And so being familiar with the planning staff, zoning staff here at the town, I, on Monday, the 5th of April, that's seven months ago now, I inquired from the planning staff upstairs, what is the next milestone that is a, a hard, fast deadline that our church has to accomplish and to stay within the permissions we've been given? Ms. Gail, looking at the, the folders on file, said that the site plan had been signed by the planning board on the 12th of November, 2009. And the, therefore, I was told that the building permit had to be drawn by the 11th of November next week. I did convey that information back to the pastor and felt that, you know, that was the next serious milestone that had to be accomplished by our congregation. Nowhere in that conversation I had with the planning staff was there an indication that there's a, a zoning issue that made the whole event null and void before the 11th of April. And so I'm under the view that, you know, I could, we could go upstairs to, and draw our building permit based on what I was told seven months ago. Go upstairs and build a, draw a building permit tomorrow. Now, I, I realize you've had some discussion on that earlier this evening. But that, that's information I had learned from this town's staff seven months ago. And I wanna, I wanna finish with addressing one of your concerns, Mr. Chair, on why it's right for, under the conditions of getting a waiver. As you approach this town from Bedford on 114, Daniel Plummer Intersections, one of the first intersections you do approach. And I consider it the right location for a church. Through a buffer of trees that exist along the, the shoulder of Daniel Plummer and, and, excuse me, St. A's Drive and 114, to me, it would be the right thing to see the soft approach of, of a, a church set back across the tree line rather than the back of a building or industrial building. You know, more of a welcoming to Goffstown, that we have a community atmosphere here that encourages community activities. And so that's, from, from my personal perspective, it's the right thing to do for Goffstown and to have that appearance. Thank you.
Any questions of Mr. Pierce? Thank you. Anyone else speaking on behalf of the applicant? Are there any butters to the property that wish to speak? Anyone against the application, any interested parties? Did I get anyone that wants to speak and have not? All right? All right, any questions of the applicant before we close the public hearing? All right, we're gonna close the public hearing, which is faster than it happened last time. I'm gonna bring up the history on this case. All right, so I think we can deliberate right now on both variances. We can consider them both at the same time.
I'd like, I'd like to make one comment. When Mr. Pierce just stated about going to the town offices, I think we've said this more than once at our meetings, that because people have come and said that they have gotten direction from staff. And it, it's my understanding that it had always been that you can go, anyone can go to the town hall and get direction from staff, but it is the responsibility of the applicant and the property owner to be knowledgeable of their own deadlines. And I just would, just like to interject that because I believe that is the, that is what it is.
Okay.
I, I, one of the things I was thinking as he was saying that was that planning and zoning are two different things. And he, they knew that they had the variant, or the special exception previously, and that should also have been addressed as well as the planning issues. So, you know, it's, it's a shame that they didn't have the foresight to inquire about that so that that could have been taken care of at the same time, but instead they let it lapse.
I wanna, Derek, do, did they ever go for a building permit?
We have not received a building permit application, no.
Ever?
Correct. Any comments, further comments or motions? Need to review the criteria. The, the attorney went through it pretty well. I think we asked questions based upon it.
I don't agree with a lot of what he said about the criteria, about the spirit of the ordinance and contrary to public interest for the reasons that I said before. It's a holdup application. And just the fact that it was approved before doesn't mean that we need to approve it again. It wasn't, the zoning ordinance wasn't changed. When the zoning ordinance was changed, they had what they needed to continue going forth. And then the zoning ordinance was changed to protect our, our, the rest, the remaining industrial land. This land was already perceived to be, going to be a church, but they, they let it lapse. And that's not our fault, and while they're protecting 180 parishioners, we have a town and an ordinance to protect. So it's just kinda where my thoughts are going.
Okay. Any motions?
I make a motion to deny the request for the variance based upon the fact that it does not meet the spirit of the ordinance, which, which states that no churches are to be built on industrial zone property.
Any other comments to round?
I, I think it goes to both the spirit, would you say, the spirit of the ordinance and the public interest.
Are you seconding or just updating our comment?
And I'll amend it to say in public interest.
Any discussion? Well, I'll, I'll walk through my comments on that, that, I'm, I'm gonna-
I like, I like it when you do that.
So I, I, I agree. I mean, I think the argument that the, that the applicant made to speak into the spirit of the ordinance is diametrically opposed to what the town spoke to. Now, this, the town has looked at it, says it's an industrial zone, you don't have churches in there. But the applicant is correct in that the Supreme Court of New Hampshire requires us to look at the totality of the information, looking at, it's, it, we, we can't state that there's a law against it, therefore you can't do it. So we have to think about that. So that's why I said, but you gotta tell me about the other things, substantial justice. They didn't, frankly, didn't speak to surrounding property values, and we kinda, just kind of, I guess it's a wash, right? We didn't have an issue with it, they didn't bring it as up as an issue, we-
Well, I did have a-
You did have an issue, but we didn't dwell on the-
Right.
The traffic and how much traffic, when's the peak traffic, and, you know, the effect on the weekdays and stuff. We could've. We did have a heartburn with that. So I, you know, to me, I didn't see an issue with the effect on surrounding property values. I do see an enhancement in ways that it, that can happen, as Mr. Pierce spoke to. So I, I, you know, some value surrounding properties. I think, I think the applicant has, uh, let me go to the hard, well, I'll start, I'll start with the, I'm trying to make the story, and I can't make it a story. Uh, the substantial justice, I think the applicant's strongest case that they, that they kept going w- was slightly off in the fact that they were saying that, you know, we, we had it before, we, it should just be a continuance. What they need to speak to is substantial justice. The substantial justice is, there is a long history to this property. There is, that they did go through the process rightfully and get a special exception, 'cause that's what was required at the time. That they did get that special exception, that they went to the planning board, that the planning board was required at the time. That during the planning board process, they should admit, someone should admit, there was something that changed. That the process, okay, maybe we made a, made a mistake, but we went through the process to get it right. We went for the variance, we went in front of the ZBA at the time, this is where the history comes back. And I was just joining the board at the time, and Gail and Kathy were here. That, you know, there was a long discussion in, in, about these exact criteria, you know, in this case, that speaking to the height of the steeple and lights and sounds and amphitheaters and traffic and, you know, and they, and they spoke to tho- those things, and they were able to convince the, the five-member panel to vote for, for the case. That, that they met, in that case even, that they still, they had to meet the hurdle of the spirit of the ordinance. 'Cause at the time, when they went for the variance, the spirit of the ordinance was that Goffstown was not allowing churches in an industrial zone. So they, they had, they went for that variance with that understanding. That's why they had to go for a variance, is because of that. Otherwise, they would've just gone back for another special exception. But they had to go through the variance, 'cause the rule had changed.
That doesn't sound right.
No, you got, no.
Where'd I go wrong?
The, the, the rule changed after you got the special exception.
It is, correct.
Right.
But they were at the planning board. What the planning board and the Z, uh, determined was that the plans that they were going through at, at a subsequent meeting had substantially changed from the ones that had been, uh, presented-
Right.
To the ZBA.
Right.
So when they came back to the ZBA, we made a decision, you gotta start over. Because you have now changed your plans significantly, that that special exception gets washed away. So now you have to meet what the, the new criteria is at the time that you are reapplying with the new plan. The new cra- requirement was, uh, it was a variance, because churches were no longer allowed in the industrial zone. Otherwise, they would've just come back and said, oh, we have a new map, you're right. We have a new drawing of how the properties can be laid out, let's go back for that special exception. And, but they didn't do that. They had to come back for a variance. Is that the sequence that you recall, Derek? Or is this my story and I gotta stick with it?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is how I understand it. Otherwise, the variance doesn't make sense, they would've gone back for a special exception.
They had the special exception, and they had to go to the planning board, and then the planning board, what they brought to the planning board had additions to it that were not on the plans presented to the zoning board, so they had to come back to the zoning board again, to us again, for us to review the new plans, and, and we reviewed the new plans, and then they had to go back to the planning board after that.
We granted a variance.
Yes, we did.
But why did we grant a variance if the criteria didn't change?
I think the variance was on the steeple.
No, in the meantime, they, they got a variance because the ordinance had changed in March of 2008.
And that's what I'm saying, is if the ordinance had changed, and the ordinance was churches are not allowed in the industrial zone. So when they went back to the ZBA, they were meeting the exact criteria as they are now. They had to get over that hurdle to say, you're right, town, that piece of property is zoned industrial, the zoning ordinance says no churches in industrial zone, but here's why I think we should be able to meet the criteria. Rightly or wrongly, the ZBA at that time said, good, you've met the five criteria, I understand that churches are not allowed in industrial zone, but the application has permit, I could see why a variance is permitted, and they granted a variance. So now, simply between then and now is, they let that variance lapse. The same relative zoning ordinance was in place then as it is now, except they let that two years lapse without coming back to us for a continuance, which they could've simply done. Come to us with continuance, we don't have the money, the economy is bad, we heard an application last month, the exact same thing. We probably would've said, all right, you know, but we would've had to hear it. So, but in this case, new application. So now, the substantial justice is, this is the story. This is how we got here. We messed up, and we, you know, we changed the plans way back, and we had to come back for the variance, we got it, oh, Mr. Pierce says, oh, we should've gotten a continuance, we didn't. But we still have the same mission in place, we're still trying to do the same thing, still trying to build a church, we still have 180 parishioners, the land hasn't changed, the neighborhood hasn't changed, the zoning hasn't changed, the towns haven't significantly grown, the demand for the, the property isn't, isn't changed, the, the economy is still roughly the same, why can't we just have this again? That's the substantial justice that they would've, should've presented in an argument. Then, when you could go on to, if you go back to the hardship, and we're looking at it as a new application, you gotta tell me why this piece of property is different. Why is it different than the others? Why this piece of property shouldn't have to be zoned? Why can't it be special? Why can't it be a church? In its location, access, you know, granites, parking, driving, I mean, you could come up with all kinds of reasons, that this piece of property is unique in this neighborhood, why I should be able to be different from the others? And, and, and the applicant started going down that track of, it is relatively incompatible with a large industrial area. It'd have to be a small industry in that area, and there just frankly hasn't been a demand for it, as the pastors did, there has been no demand. That should've been their case, they tried to get there, so, you know, I'm trying not to make their case for, and then the last piece was, well, it's a church, you know, we're not gonna build a house on there, that's not our purpose, it's a church, so that piece of property is either it's gonna be a church, or it's gonna be a vacant lot. So, it all goes back to spirit of the ordinance, it really does. I, I think that they have cases for the rest, it comes back to, really, do we agree with what the zoning board did two years ago in that, and are they making the case tonight that this church in an industrial zone, while it doesn't meet the letter of the law, it, applications of totality, passes muster for a variance, undone.
I have a concern, my concern is that if, if there was a church built in the industrial zone, all right, and this new application comes before us, and they wanna build a church in the industrial zone, and we say, there's no churches allowed in the industrial zone, and this applicant says, well, yes, you have churches built in the industrial zone, why are we different? They're not different, they met the same criteria, they met the, we're supposed to be looking at this as a new applicant. And that's where I get a, you know, I'm really confused about some of the things that's going on.
Yeah.
And, and, and another thing is hardship considered a criteria to look at?
Yes, it's one of the five criteria. It's one of, and they have to be affirmed on each one of these, we have to say that, yep, 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 that there is substantial justice, there is, it meets the spirit of the ordinance, the public interest, and, and I guess my, my speech isn't over. So, the, I'm just trying to make sure all the facts on the table here.
And, and I'm listening, I'm listening.
This is a big deal.
Yeah.
It's years of stuff involved in this, otherwise, we're gonna hear it again. So, we're gonna try and make sure we catch all the points here, we don't wanna talk about it again in 30 days, we prefer not to. So, the first point you made regarding, if we approve this, could some, another church come in and say, I wanna build right next to it, another spot industrial zone? Absolutely, because it's not about what everybody's doing, it's about the property. We have to look at that piece of property and the, and the rights of the individual who owns that property. It's not about, we, you know what, so what? You can't build a church because it's not right, go sell it. That's not, we, we're not in the selling business, we're telling people to sell, it's about, we're trying to protect the rights of the individual who owns the piece of property, what can or can't they do, within the bounds of the zoning ordinance, within the bounds of the public interest, and, and so you have to look at that as a, it's, we should never be here to say, you know what, sorry, sell it, all right? That's not, it's not what we should be looking at. We deny it, whether it's right or wrong, in accordance with the zoning. The, the second part regarding the spirit of the ordinance I didn't address is, you're right, it doesn't meet the spirit of what the town has asked for. But who's here, speaking on behalf of the town against it? All the abutters were notified, town knows about it, nobody's here speaking out against it, nobody. So, when we take and look at a balance, and we've used this argument before, things that we kinda not like, it's, you know, it's not really something I would do, but you look out there, not one person stood up and said, what the hell are we putting a church in the industrial zone for? Don't you know, we've got a limited amount of property that, that we can earn income for the town? Nobody's, but nobody's here, nobody's filed on something behalf of...
But either, but me, let me say something there, because the only ones who get noticed are the abutters.
You're right, absolutely.
The abutters are businesses. And I have actually seen it at various meetings for different things, where if it was somebody from the other side of town, the excuse would be, they're from the other side of town, so it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter who's here and who doesn't, who's not here, we have this criteria to meet.
You're right, but we do look at the people who come, we've talked about that before, we look at the people who come, and there's a line of people who wanna speak up against it, it impacts us. It doesn't say anything pushes over the edge or not, but it all is impacting, everything that is said or is not said is a statement, that provides impact, so...
My motion is still on the floor.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just making sure, you know, that's the deliberation with the motion on the floor before we make a vote on it. That's the points I wanted to make. Any other points?
Well, I, I would probably go back to say that because the special exception was already in, in the pike in the previous application, which we're not supposed to refer to, that...
No, you can't, it, it's just about...
You did, so I thought...
Yeah, no, you can't, we can't say that because they had it, they have a right to have it.
Right, but I think that was, I think that was part of the consideration that was given in the last, last issue of the variance, because there was a special exception, and then we had, they had to go for a variance. But I, once again, I, I stand on the issue that this is, this is industrial zone property, that this is a church, and that it, it is, it, it isn't a unique piece of property that, that this church should be on it. A church could be built in another location, and again, I stand on, on the fact of the matter that there are commercial businesses that have been built on Daniel Plummer Road, 75% of that road is commercial businesses. Why this property might not have sold, and therefore somebody got a good deal on it, and, and thought that'd be the reason, there are other circumstances to why properties don't sell, other than the fact that the economy is bad. I think the town spoke clearly, and, and I think the town, and it, and it was a result of this, that the, the ordinance went to, on the town ballot for, for voting to see if, if this trend was going to continue in this town, because this, we, we do, because we do, as Gail said, we, we have to answer to the town's people, we have to answer to the taxpaying residents of this town. And this church answers to 150, maybe 200 parishioners, and especially during an economic time, I would say to you that we need to encourage industrial development and not discourage development of industrial property to non-taxable entities.
Okay.
I wanna add that when you were pressing the applicant for comments about hardship, one of the things that he said was...
I know, I know what he said.
Wait a minute, let me find it.
That there is nothing unique about this property.
Yeah, they're right, he said that there was nothing unique, he said it was the history and the ownership, but not the property itself.
I know, they didn't say that.
And that goes, if there's nothing unique about the property, doesn't meet the criteria.
Okay, so, considering that this is a big case, I'm just gonna say it's a big case, that in your, in your motion, you, you spoke to the first and second criteria, I think we should have, that you either, I'm trying to say is, by only addressing the first two criteria, are you saying that criteria three, four, and five, that they meet those criteria in this application?
Not necessarily, which I would, I mean, I would consider amend, if you wanna amend, just to add the fact that the applicant himself stated that there's no, nothing different about the property, nothing unique about the property that qualifies for the hardship that is required here.
And why I'm asking is because if they appeal it, then it could appeal all the appropriate elements that we disapproved it of.
I would amend my motion, and I would, I would ask, when we finish with the final motion, that Gail read us the final motion again.
Thanks. It's in bits and pieces.
Well, yeah.
You know, I, I'm sure...
So let's, let's walk through, let's, let's get what you would say, your motion is for granting the variance would do substantial justice, would granting this variance to the applicant grant substantial justice to them?
To them?
To them.
It's not just to them?
No, I'm gonna say to them, and then to the town. I mean, you make, you make a point, is, how would you see substantial justice in this case?
I would see substantial justice in not allowing a non-taxable entity to develop on a prime taxable parcel of property.
So you're saying by, uh...
By, by...
By granting it?
By granting it, we are, we are, we are creating a hardship for the town.
Not doing substantial justice, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay.
Can I, can I make a comment before we go too much further into this? Is, in that, you know, for the entire evening, we've been going back and forth as far on the point that this is new, and then we bring up history.
Yeah.
Then it's back to, this is new, we gotta bring up history. And I think in order to do justice to both sides, we need to keep in mind that this is new. It is new, and it's unfortunate that it came up that way, but this is new.
Right, it is, it's a new, there's, there's a...
It's a new application.
It's a nuance to that, though.
It's a new applica, I realize that, but...
Substantial justice is, is, can reach into the past. The other?
I don't, I don't think so.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we've...
I think it's a stretch.
You know, again, and I, and I say, because of the type of board that we are, we sometimes have to, no, we have to, we have to leave motion, we have to leave a lot of personal feelings out, and we have to look at this as exactly what it is. It's an application for a variance to a zoning law, and that's what we, as a board, are responsible to the town, to the applicant, and to the citizens of the town, to do the best that we can to keep this pure. So, with that said, we, we, let's, let's continue.
Thank you for your comment. Four, the values of surrounding properties will not be diminished if we were to grant it. Do you believe that, do you affirm that, or you, you don't believe that?
I believe they would be.
They would be?
I, I, I believe that the traffic in the area...
That values would be diminished?
Would contribute to the diminishing of the values of the residential properties in the area.
Is there any thing that you would cite in that?
Well, they have mentioned 157 cars going by, going into that church, even on, on a one-day basis, but then again, churches are, are open 24/7, I believe, or some close at 11 and open up at seven or eight in the morning, but they're open, and there are different functions of a church other than just Sunday prayer services. And the doors are usually always open to a church, and I, I do feel that the traffic and the possibility of lights and sounds could add, would adversely affect the neighborhood.
And then you already spoke to the hardship, that you believe that, do you believe that, that literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in a necessary hardship to the applicant? That if we were to deny them their application, that there would be unnecessary hardship to them? Okay, that's the basic question.
I think it's a great location for, for an industrial or commercial property, and personally, I think he got it for a good price.
And so, you know, you don't have to say no to every one of these?
Right.
You can say yes, and, or it's not proven, or something like that, too.
That's, that's one of the tougher ones, I would say, one of the tougher ones to consider, but when you consider that he did purchase it for 50% of the asking price, that that takes a little bit off of hardship.
There are a couple of different criteria to the, that have to be met for the, for the hardship. And as far as it being a great location for industrial property, it is. As far as it being a good location for a church, at the, you know, it's kinda like the entryway into Gulfstown, representative of community and things as they described, I think it is. I mean, I can envision a steeple, maybe I might not, careful one as tall as that they said, I can actually envision that there, and, and seeing it as being attractive. However, there's also, to meet the variance criteria, it's got to have a uniqueness to the land itself, and they admitted that there is none.
All right, so your motion is, is that it's heavily weighted on items one and two, and the, and the fact that it does not meet the spirit of the ordinance, it is contrary to public interest, that, that granting this variance would not do substantial justice for the town, that values of surrounding properties, although we don't, may not have the full set of details, you don't see that, that they'd be enhanced or diminished, that you might believe they'd be diminished, and that there is a, that literally enforcing the, that the, literally enforcing the ordinance on the, this applicant does not create unnecessary hardship.
Right.
Essentially the story, is your, your statement.
It's my story.
I'm second to it.
And you, you second to that?
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion on the floor to deny the variances, all those in favor of denying the variances, say aye.
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 Can I do a roll, Vivian, was that it?
Aye.
Was that an aye? Kathy was?
Yes, yes, it was an aye.
And I'm a nay. So the variances have been denied. All right? And there was no abstentions, right? So they had a count of five?
Because we are treating this as a new application, not, because, you know, the whole issue of discussing this was the old variance, the new variance, and when Kevin brought up that it's a, that's Kevin, right?
Ed.
Ed, brought up that it's a new variance, I believe the discussion should not have been included as the, with the old variance.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying?
Yep.
It was just kind of confusing.
Okay, all right, thank you. Yeah, we're going to take five now, five or six minutes, so let's, let's come back at 9:40. Ladies and gentlemen, we're back and we're going to move on to our next application. Just to remind everyone, we have two applications yet to go this evening and then we have two items that we are discussing as a board. So the next application, and I always fix my pronunciation, James Modesto, applicant, is seeking a special exception and variance to allow the development of a non-conforming lot. The applicant is proposing a lot line adjustment between two existing lots on Goffstown Back Road to allow the construction of a single-family dwelling unit. One lot located at 268 Goffstown Back Road, which is map six, lot 14-1, is a not, is a, excuse me, conforming lot with 221.04 feet of frontage and is 2.33 acres, whereas section 4.3 of the zoning ordinance requires 200 feet of frontage and two acres. The second lot located to the west on Goffstown Back Road, map six, lot 14-3, is a non-conforming lot because it has 57.52 feet of frontage and 6.47 acres, whereas section 4.3 requires 200 feet of frontage and two acres. The proposed lot line adjustment will maintain the current frontage on the lots and adjust the lines separating the lots, resulting in lot 14-1 having 221.04 feet of frontage with 6.05 acres and lot 14-3 having 57.52 feet of frontage with 2.74 acres. The special exception to develop the non-conforming lot, lot 14-3, is authorized under section 14.7.3. The variances from sections 14.7.3.2 and 14.3.7.4 are required because both lots are under the same ownership and the proposed lot line adjustment does not minimize the existing non-conformity. The properties are located at 268 Goffstown Back Road, map six, lot 14-1 and 14-3, in an agricultural district. Prior to the public hearing, the ZBA needs to vote on regional impact.
I make a motion that does not have a regional impact? Second.
Any discussion? Manchester is just a smidge down the road, aye, there's a second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, reveste, 500.
Yeah.
So who is here to speak on behalf of this application?
Good evening, my name is Don Duval, I'm the surveyor representing Jim Modesto. Essentially what we're doing is a lot line adjustment between two lots. These lots were created in 1989. Lot 14-1 was developed, there is a house on it. 14-3 is an undeveloped lot. The reason for the development is, although 14-3 is a buildable lot by previous subdivision, in actuality, there's really no viable area that that lot can be built upon. So what we are doing is adjusting the lot line such that a house which would be constructed for Mr. Modesto's daughter can be built on the buildable portion of the parent lot where the house is now. We cannot increase any of the road frontage due to the location of the septic system on lot 14-1, the lot with the house. The lot will be accessed by a driveway on the western portion of 14-3. It's a common driveway that reaches this lot and the lot behind it. Trying to think of the gentleman's name, Borbassina, Tom Borbassina. When they subdivided these lots in 1989, unfortunately, they put the lot line between two of the lots down the middle of the existing driveway. Our plan is to utilize that driveway, we have been talking with Mr. Borbassina, and although we haven't got all the final nuts and bolts to it, we're come, we're in agreement that something can be reached that'll allow Mr. Modesto's daughter to use the existing driveway. We'll be putting in with some type of joint use agreement for maintenance and existing use. The other alternative is to build a new driveway adjacent to the existing driveway for both people. So we've done test pits out there, the land is suitable, so probably just ask any, answer any questions you might have.
This is presently up at the state for shoreline.
Yes, correct.
When was that sent to the state?
I think yesterday. We just did the test pits in the last couple of days.
So a couple of things, Kathy, just by asking that question reminded me, there's three items on the staff review. The first item, Derek stated, I made an administrative determination, which he attached, on August 12, 2010, that the property was not a single lot as shown by the assessor, because if you go on the GIS, you can see that it's all one large lot. The basis for this determination was the lot merger document was not properly recorded in accordance with New Hampshire RSA 674, colon, 39-a. My determination was that the property was two separate lots, 14-1 and 14-3 subdivided in 1989. He goes on to say paragraph two, the two lots were conforming lots when they were subdivided in 1989, previous zoning ordinance permitted flag lots. And a flag lot is essentially what that second piece of property is. Item three, the proposed lot line adjustment does not make the deficient frontage on lot 14-3 more conforming, however, the existing residence and septic location prevent the change in the front boundary marker, and that's what Mr. Duval just said. So, tell me, tell me, where was that driveway you're speaking of that you're going to have to share with?
On the Westerly lot line of 14-3.
In the west in this case, it's at the top?
Right, it says existing drive.
Okay.
At least it does on mine, I may have added it after.
It doesn't say that on it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So Westerly is...
Top of the page, the lot where you showed it.
Okay.
Like I say, that lot right now, that driveway is presently used by Mr. Borbassina, but in the 1989 subdivision, the lot line was down the middle of that road. So in essence, each owner has...
Half the driveway.
Used to half of the, half of the driveway. We're trying to clarify that, either with a joint use agreement or maybe establish some type of joint use easements, which should have been done in 1989 but weren't.
But you're not changing the location of the driveway, you're keeping it the same?
We're not planning on it, no. Like I say, worst-case scenario would, would be that they would widen the driveway towards the Modesto property, but I think Mr. Borbassina is agreeable to working something reasonable out that protects both parties.
The, the, the previous lot line shows that's where it's to be eliminated. What, what is all that property down past the, this area down here, was this considered a buildable area or was it to get to it would be too difficult to make?
For the topo, we just bought the town GIS and it just continually slopes at a 23, right, that's all the GIS would give us, but it continually slopes. Though there was really, essentially, the only buildable area, if you wanted to squeeze anything, would be right adjacent to the power line.
Would it be difficult as a...
Exactly, you'd, you'd have to squeeze everything. At least this way, we have a nice flat, buildable area access. And then also, we would have had to work out with some type of agreement with public service to cross the utility lines.
What is this diagram? Is that what was originally approved that's here, this little, on the assessing card?
Yeah, that looks like the subdivision.
That's a, I think that's a scan of the 1989 subdivision.
Is that, is that a scan of the, okay.
Probably yes, it looks like it, if you want to look, this is a 1989 subdivision.
Why do they keep saying 1989 when it's 1990?
Originally had a subdivision, but they never filed a...
But it says 1998, I don't see 89.
It was filed at the registry, they just never pulled a building permit on it.
89 here.
And like I say, a previous owner attempted to merge the lots, but the process would never follow through.
But it's true, on GIS shows us one big lot, large lot.
Oh, yes.
Shows it as one, it's 14-1, is what the GIS shows.
Right.
It's one big, large lot.
That's how the assessing department has shown it since the notice of lot merger was submitted to the town.
Okay.
See, I questioned that with the town, because when my client bought it, his deed distinctly showed two tracks and that's when I started investigating, went to the town, they told me it was merged, I read the RSA, found out that the notice of merger was never recorded by the town at the registry of deeds. So in essence, it was null and void.
So this is the one that's null and void?
Correct.
Correct. This is what it looks like in actuality?
Yes.
Yes.
Because we only update our tax maps once a year and this was discovered after.
Okay, and this is what they want it to become?
Correct.
This is the driveway.
Okay, so this picture here, we basically, we ignore.
Correct.
All right, so this is what we have, this is what they want.
You see the previous lot lines are shown.
That straightens me out, because I'm looking at, you know, one map has, doesn't even show a 14-3 and, all right, so this is what we're currently working with and this is what they want to do with it.
Yes.
Okay. Vivian, did you have any questions over there?
I'm confused right now, because he's got, he said there's one house, an existing house, now he's got a plot for a house here and then he's got a proposed something area on 14.3.
Let's propose 4K area for the septic plan.
That's for the septic area.
For subdivision approval.
Where's the house going on 14.3?
Basically, you can go anyplace inside the building setbacks, but the intent is to put it to the rear of that 4K area.
The rear being where it's, for instance, where it says...
The rear of the house will be up against the public service right of way.
Okay.
Where the circle is.
All right.
Right, that's...
So the septic system and the leaching bed will be in the front yard?
That's the intent, correct.
Yeah.
So when I read this again.
Okay. And the driveway that's going to have, either have to be split with an agreement or you're going to have to put a new driveway in form is what's bordering the...
In the prior...
The west side, well, northwest side.
Correct.
All right.
I believe in the prior plans that, that it looks like the driveway was the one that you put driveways next to each other versus the shared driveway, which I don't feel the town favors.
But it is an existing condition, situation. That driveway was there in 1989 when the lot was created.
But it's, but it's not presently shared, is that correct?
Mr. Modesto uses it occasionally to walk out, the only reason it's not really truly shared is, there's not a dwelling there now, but Mr. Modesto, on his house, sometimes circles around it and comes out that way. Actually, I've been utilizing it during our survey as exiting the property.
Is the gentleman here that owns this?
Yes.
Okay. So are you going to have like a, in the deed, a written right of way or...
That's what we're, that's what we're trying to work out with, with Tom Borbassina. It says that should have been done in 1989, when this was before the planning board, but for whatever reason, it wasn't caught. So I'm just trying to rectify that problem.
Because you would need that in your deed, you know.
Correct. The plan is to either put it in the deed, well, put it in the deed plus record a joint use agreement for maintenance and continued use.
How much frontage do you have on 14-1 right now?
200.
200 and, what you have, 200 and...
221.04.
221.04.
Thank you.
221.04, and how much on the proposed 14-3?
57 and change.
Yep.
Basically, it's right where it was in 1989.
Yeah, the frontage is not changing.
So it's not becoming any less or more conforming?
That's exactly right. Perfect.
Does, is our concern the driveway? I mean, is that under our concern, that isn't under our concern at all, is it? No, not for me, okay.
Nope. Our concern is the fact that they need a special exception to develop a non-conforming lot and that the fact is by joining these two lots together, because they're the same owner, our zoning ordinance requires them to make it one whole lot instead of continuing it as two separate lots when they're not conforming.
And basically, there's a new state law that the towns cannot forcibly merge them. It just came effect of September of this year.
Okay. Do you have any text in regards to that law?
I don't have the text with me, but that was done.
Copy here if you want to read it.
But I will say that our zoning ordinance does not have an automatic...
It came from my land surveyors.
It does not have an automatic merger, it has a provision that when you try to develop a non-conforming lot, it tries to minimize those non-conformities.
Interesting title, which are we?
It came as an email from the land surveyors.
Because they got 57-foot frontage and the house is set back, really set back to, I don't know what the frontage is there, does that make a difference?
Not any longer, the old zoning ordinance did have...
An old zoning...
Yeah, the, the, zoning ordinance in the 80s did allow for flag lots where you could have a very narrow lot as long as it widened at a certain point where the house was going to go.
Yeah.
And I think that's what, how the 89 subdivision was allowed.
I see.
But the zoning ordinance no longer has that provision written in it or allows that, so it's now a non-conforming.
And now we're dealing with some of those things, we've heard a few cases in a couple of years that I've been here.
Yeah. Are there any wetlands defined on this plan?
Basically, the Piscatacora River, but other than that, no. I mean, technically...
And the reason I ask that is be, which way, okay.
It's right next to the daycare center.
Is it sloping down towards the river?
It's going down towards the river.
Okay.
Probably about 80...
So the property drains to the river?
Right, it's about 80 foot at least.
I'm reading almost 70.
Almost 100.
Almost 100.
In relationship where the proposed area is, where does the public service right of way go? It's not, I don't see...
Do you see that dash line, the double dash line?
Yeah.
Right here.
Right. On the old one, it was, I think, a little bit bigger.
No, it's in the same, it's identical.
Oh, I see it, okay, gotcha. How come this, it just looks different? That's the assessment card. I don't see, we...
I would say the most appropriate map would be to use the one that Mr. Duval has presented.
The new one?
Yeah, because the older, was an older survey and some of it is GIS maps.
I didn't, I didn't visit this property and I liked exactly where it is, where is it exactly?
Do you know where that daycare center is?
The one, yes.
Edge of Care?
No, no, the other one across the street.
It's not Edge of Care, it's on...
By Soretz, by Soretz gravel pit.
Right, right.
Soretz, the daycare, this property.
Yes.
Okay.
It's got a big, big stone wall in front of it.
It used to be a general store.
It used to be a general store, yeah.
It used to be a general store, yep.
Other, other applications? Are there other questions for the applicant?
And, okay.
Are there already driveways there? There's no, just that road.
And then there's the existing driveway to the existing house.
Who's got fourteen point two? What's on there?
What's that?
Fourteen point two.
That's just another lot adjacent to us.
Mr. Peters Properties LLC.
Yeah, LLC.
The neighbor.
Yep. Okay, so it's just these two we're talking about?
Fourteen point two is the one with the daycare on it.
I was gonna say, is that what it is?
Yes.
All right, I see it. What, what has changed in our zoning ordinance since this was last approved?
What was changed?
That would affect this. Not, not, not everything, but.
Since nineteen eighty-nine, what was changed?
Oh geez, okay, never mind.
Well, no, quite, quite a bit has changed. The zoning ordinance in two thousand and one was reorganized. And there were some minor changes then. The wetlands and surface water conservation district was adopted in ninety-three. The minimum lot size and frontage requirements and the way lots could be designed was changed at some point. So it no longer allows for flag lots, hence this becoming a non-conforming lot. And probably a handful of other things.
So the merger was not recorded at the registry. The two lots were merged for taxation purposes. Oh. So they're not two lots yet? They have to be.
There are still two lots.
They are two lots, because it was never.
There are two lots.
The assessor treated them as one lot, but when we opened the assessing file, it had that original document in it with the raised notary seal and all the original signatures on it that had never been sent down to the registry. So under state law, that, that, those two lots were never merged. So I made the determination that it was still two, it was still two distinct lots.
So let's go, let's go back to the application, so we can focus our questions on that.
Yep.
They're asking for variance and because of, that they are two lots owned by the same person, right? Same person owns both of them. Our zoning ordinance requires that if they're gonna develop that property, that they should be trying to make them more conforming. And that case would be changing the lot lines or erasing the lot lines. And then the special exception is, well, because the lots are gonna still be non-conforming, that they have to come to us for a special exception to build on the lot. That's what we should be focusing on. Can they still keep, can they adjust the lot line, and can they build on it? In the criteria, we can walk through the special exception and the variance criteria, which they provided. No? Any interest? So let me walk through it, just to make sure. So for the variance. The variance, again, the variance is to. The variance is, they're not minimizing non-conformity here. Granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest, because lots exist, no new lots would be created. The spirit of the ordinance is observed, lots already exist. Granting the variance would do substantial justice, allow better use of lot fourteen dash three, because it already exists, limited buildable area. The values of surrounding properties will not be diminished. Buildable lot exists, and that there is a hardship because of excessive slopes on lot fourteen dash three, which leave limited area to develop. So that's what they spoke to in the variance criteria. And the special exception, a little bit different. Again, this is a special exception to allow them to build on a non-conforming lot. That the site is appropriate location for such use, being consistent with the town's master plan, because existing lot with proposed residential use. The size, frequency, or use will not significantly alter the character of the neighborhood, because the use is residential, compatible with neighborhood zoning. Use will not create a nuisance or hazard to vehicles or pedestrians that cannot be ameliorated. That the lot use will be consistent with the neighborhood, they're saying. The location is sufficient size for adequate, appropriate facilities for proper operation. The lot area is in excess of the required area. And the proposed location is sufficient size to allow for appropriate buffers. They say it's a residential use who will meet all setback requirements. They emphasize that existing lot fourteen dash three, as it now stands, is limited buildable area. New configuration exceeds greatly buildable area.
Has he got the required acreage? More than the required acreage?
More than. Required is two acres.
Well, he's got the required acreage, he just doesn't have the frontage.
Right, so that's what he's, he can't correct it?
Right.
He wants to adjust the lot line so that he can leave it as two lots. Any questions, further questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. I'm gonna see if there's anybody else here to speak on behalf of the application. Anyone here to speak, that's public or abutters. Anyone here to speak against the application? Abutters, public, interested parties? All right, any last questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
We haven't decided yet. We're gonna close the public hearing. Is that all right? All right, we're gonna close the public hearing. Any motions, deliberations?
The only issue, which, which I guess really isn't an issue, but I think it does come under fifteen-three-two-one-four, is that the proposed location is sufficient size will allow for adequate and appropriate facilities for the proper operation of the use. That's where I would come in and say that I think a driveway would be something to be considered for adequate, proper facility usage, and you would have to have it in order to grant a special exception for a home. But the applicant did say that they were willing to overcome that particular obstacle and that, one of the criteria, in that he could put a driveway side by side versus the driveway, the shared driveway. So I just want to clarify that. As far as I'm concerned, I have come to the, to, to bring that an issue and answering the question, to my satisfaction, that I feel that, because he answered that he could put a driveway side by side of the existing driveway, that, that it does meet that criteria.
Okay.
Where can you put the driveway, you say?
He said the existing driveways.
I'm just letting it go.
Right here. And he could put another one right next to it. So instead of going, sharing this one, they could go here.
But he would be taken away from his frontage, would you not?
You're not requiring him to change his driveway location, are you?
No, I'm not. I'm just saying that, I am saying that I am satisfied that he meets that criteria, because there, there is a possibility, he has presented one possibility.
If he doesn't get the agreement, he could do the side by side.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. So therefore, he would have the adequate facilities.
Okay. Any other discussion, motions?
Second motion to approve.
I'll second it. Both. There is a motion on the floor to approve. Do you want to speak to them, the variance separately from this special exception?
I don't need to specifically. I think.
Okay, no, I was saying, because she was kinda asking that. I was trying to draw that out of her, that she was saying.
I was just sitting thinking, so go ahead.
No, I, I think he meets the criteria. The hardship is definitely there with the septic being there. I think that's, that's in the way. I think it's gonna meet all the other setback requirements. The space is there to be able to, to make it a developable lot by making that lot line adjustment. I just think he meets the, the criteria.
Okay. All right, any further discussion?
So the motion will be to approve both?
Yes.
The special exception and the variances?
That's correct.
I, I just want to say that. I, I think he's, to me, I'm convinced he's got the area. I mean, he's got enough area to, to build. My only concern on that is where he's got this circle, where he's gonna build, is how far is this?
The circle is the well radius.
Well, what's the proposed four K area?
That's for the septic system.
Okay, where's he building?
Somewhere between that and, you can build within, you can build the house within the well radius.
Yes, you can. But you gotta be so many feet from the septic, right?
Yeah, the well ra, the well radius and the septic can't overlap. But one of the requirements of the development regs is you have to show that four K area, and you have to show the well radius, that it's completely on the lot. And I think that's what they're doing here.
Oh, I thought there was a circle where the developers.
No, no, I believe that's the, that's the well radius, correct. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the well radius.
Well, I, I think he's got, he has the area and like.
Yeah, the space is there to be able to put it all.
You were saying that the hardship is that he wouldn't have the frontage. And he can't get any more frontage, even if he tried.
Right.
Right. And that was one of the reasons he came to us.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to approve the variance, the variances, because it's two paragraphs these requesting relief from, and the special exception. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or abstained? Five zero zero. Thank you. We're down to the last application for the evening, and I bet you gentlemen and ladies, or gentlemen, are here for that. Just taking a wild guess. Last application for this evening.
Is able to be seen, I think?
Yeah.
But I think it's placed specifically, Andrew?
Andrew?
Andrew.
If that's, leave that right there?
Okay.
No, I don't think so. Is it?
It's, it's on the camera there, yes. So let me read this. David Walton and Donna Smith-Wolton applicants are seeking variances to allow the addition of a second dwelling unit on a property that currently has a single-family dwelling in a contractor's business. The applicants propose locating a two thousand two hundred and twenty square foot addition for the second dwelling unit on the south side of the existing dwelling unit, while maintaining the existing single-family dwelling unit and the existing contractor's business. The applicants are not proposing a change to the existing contractor's business on the property as part of this project. A variance is required to allow the mixed residential, two-family, and non-residential contracting business uses on the lot, whereas section is three point seven and three point eleven dot A dot six do not permit mixed-use projects. A variance is required because the property is four acres, whereas section fifteen point thirteen requires that contracting businesses be located on a lot of at least five acres. The property is located at one-ten East Dunbarton Road, which is map nine, lot one oh seven, in the agricultural district. Prior to the public hearing, the ZBA needs to vote on regional impact. Any motions on regional impact? Derek offered that it does not have regional impact. I will.
I'm, I'll make a motion that it doesn't have regional impact.
Give me seconds.
Again?
Okay, there's a motion that it has no regional impact. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstained or opposed? Okay, five zero zero. And before we hear from the applicant, let's see. There's a number of things on this that I'll just dress straight up. The staff review. The proposed change, the, the location and size of the addition for a second dwelling unit was considered a material change, and the applicant was instructed that ZBA would need to approve. Any construction would be subject to the applicable building and fire codes enforced by the town of Gopstown. The proposed additions would require a New Hampshire DES shoreland permit. Impact fees for the second dwelling unit would be calculated at the time the building permit is issued and collected prior to the certificate of occupancy. The application was not sent to the planning board for review and comment, as the commercial use will not be expanded as part of this application. And lastly, this application was not sent to Conservation Commission for review and comment, as it does not involve a variance request from a wetland setback. And you are?
My name is John LaFave. I'm with Meridian Land Services. And also tonight, present with me, I have members of the Walton family. And I also have one of their workers from the construction business.
Okay. What are you wanting to do?
Tonight, we are seeking a variance, a special exception, for the mixed residential use of the business and for the continuance of a two-family dwelling on the property. Right now, the way it stands, the property does have a two-family dwelling. It also does have the construction company in the same building or on the same facilities. Nothing's changing, minus some additional space that's needed for the family. Currently, one of the family members is terminally ill. They're looking to add some additional space to accommodate this. There's gonna be members of the family moving into the, the existing house, and mother and father will have their own space as well. Right now, with the layout of the house, it doesn't work well with having joint family and the business involved. This will correct all the situations, so everything about the property will remain the same, minus some additional dwelling space.
Okay.
I may also point out that the, the business that sits on the, the property, ninety percent of the business is done outside the field. The business basically exists that's there. It's a family business. So you're talking about one room with a desk, and, and the vehicles that are parked there, all the tools are stored inside the vehicles. So it's not a business where essentially people come in and out of. Just wanted to point that out as well.
Before we go too much farther, either I'm having deja vu, or did, did we hear about this property recently?
You heard the exact same statement in June.
What were we seeking at that time?
At that time, they were seeking to add some additional space. And they were also going to expand some additional space for the business. It was just thought of for future plans, maybe, or, you know, storage-wise, or whatever have you. Just kind of a crazy thought, that they were building a residential addition, why not put some extra space there as well? After thought, he realized that that was nothing that he wanted to obtain this time or in the future. He just wanted to make it adequate for him and his family members for the present time.
Did we deny that?
No, it was, I believe it was accepted.
Oh, it was approved?
It was accepted. The reason why we're back at this time is because the footprint of the building has changed. What we presented last time, and we're presenting tonight, is different. Last time, we wanted to expand the business. The business portion is totally out of this.
Okay.
And it's just a residential addition at this time.
Okay, so, because when I looked at the GIS house, I was confused, I guess, between the application and what the GIS was saying, and that, and that the GIS was talking that this is a single-family residence with an attached dwelling unit, accessory dwelling unit.
Yes.
And so, we're just expanding that attached accessory dwelling unit.
Yeah, right now.
To a full bore dwelling unit.
Right now, the way it stands is that while there's two units, two accessory dwellings there, the access to them is not in a private manner. Everything is staggered on top of each other. They want to separate that. So they want to add the addition to accommodate, so that two families can live there adequately.
Okay, so the final configuration is two dwelling units?
Yes. It's, it's the same as, as exists. It's just some additional space, and the layout will change. Right now, the, the existing dwelling or the addition, accessory unit is downstairs.
Okay.
That will be removed. That will be just a basement for the upstairs living area. And then they will have, off to the side, the addition part will accommodate some of the existing space, so the two properties are separate. They will have their own access points. Everything will be corrected, so that the two units are actually more livable.
Okay.
So we are definitely not talking about a two-family with an accessory?
No.
We're talking about strictly two-family?
Yes.
So we're talking a duplex?
Essentially, yes.
Essentially, okay.
No, no bedrooms will improve. There will be no more additional bedrooms. This, this correct anything. The septic will have to be updated. Living quarters will be better, because they can access them through their own entrances. I mean, everything about the layout, that. I mean, everything about the layout that changes will actually, you know, help to adhere the situation. Make a better product in the end.
You're saying it's a two-family, but there's no extra bedrooms. Is that what you're saying?
The, the existing bedrooms that are downstairs are to be removed.
Oh, and you're gonna.
And they're gonna put the additional space, but the layout the way it is, it can't be presented in a way, um, to accommodate privacy for both sides.
Okay. What's the square footage of the existing house?
I have a tax card here. Well, it's nine sixty plus nine sixty below.
I know that's.
Is that the way I'm reading this?
I know that it's sixty feet.
It's almost two thousand.
No, you're looking at the barn, the first floor is one thousand five hundred four square feet and then the basement that is finished is three hundred sixty square feet, so about eighteen hundred, almost nineteen hundred square feet between the first floor and the basement that is finished. A portion of that may be used for the business, um, because it does not break out the business space separately on the assessing card.
Is your question or comment?
Yeah, I was, I was trying to, uh, get to a point and I'm, I, I guess Derek's gonna answer this one for me, is that if you have a duplex and a business, why is this business not considered an accessory use?
Because I don't believe there is this type of businesses as an accessory use.
I don't believe there is either, I just wanna make sure.
If you look at the table of accessory uses.
Yeah.
There is no provision for this type of business, there's a home occupation.
Yeah.
But it's generally been regarded in this town that landscaping businesses or contracting businesses fall under, uh, page nineteen.
Okay.
Landscaping, contracting or similar business, which is permitted in this district. Cause it's.
Permitted as a primary or a sector or accessory use?
As a, as a principal use, that's why there was notice for this, that a variance is required for two principal uses on the lot.
Oh, yeah, it, it didn't, yeah, this, this paragraph didn't clearly say that like it did last time, the two principal uses thing.
Okay.
Cause I'm like, man, I think I've read this before.
You're right. I just refreshed my, how many vehicles go in and out of here?
I can actually let the Walton speak on that behalf of the business if you'd like.
I'd be curious just to refresh my memory on what that.
Hi, Ryan Walton. The amount of vehicles, uh, we have around fifteen vehicles. Say at any given time, uh, half of them are parked and the other half are out in the field working and they return in the evening. During, uh, the day, between say around seven o'clock in the morning and six o'clock at night, there is no traffic to speak of.
When these fifteen vehicles or half of them are coming and or going, does that mean that they're, whoever's coming and going in them, they, have they parked their own personal vehicles on your lot and things?
Yes.
Quick question, um, as far as access to the property for these vehicles, the, the map is, is not real clear, but there's a, I see notation that there's a gravel drive up here, is that where those vehicles are coming in and out?
On what would be the south end of the lot, there is a gravel drive.
Okay, that is it.
And on the north end, there's also gravel driveway and they kind of connect around the back of the property.
They're talking about two access points.
Okay.
The, the access point on the, the south end of the lot, essentially you pull directly into an open parking lot and then it continues as a drive around the back of the property and connects with, with, you know, and out the, the north end.
Have you done Google Street View in front of your property?
Uh, yeah.
Cause there's, that parking lot shows the cars are in it and there's somebody at a vehicle there.
Oh, is there?
Yeah, and you do the drive-by, someone's, someone's got there looking and they're working inside the engine of a, of a pickup truck, so.
Oh, okay, yeah, we also, um, there's a company that I guess flies over and takes photographs of people's property and they sold us a photograph many years ago, yeah.
Yeah.
That's hanging right over my desk, so I actually see it all the time.
Any other questions? So, so Derek, I wanna just go back to the application just a little bit. Uh, and this goes back to the new application versus the old and stuff. The last time we, we made, you were making a, a statement that, you know, we were talking about it's two principal uses on a single piece of property, that's why they needed a variance for that.
Yes.
Now, I don't see that spelled out differently, here you're speaking to more of a mixed use project.
I think, I, I, I intended to say the same thing, but in this case, I said mixed use project rather than, uh, two principal uses.
But it's the same.
But I cited the same sections of the ordinance. My intention was to, uh, say the same thing.
Well, what's interesting is that we've never really, I've never talked about or asked about, what is the minimum requirements and what is the process to get a mixed use project in place? Does this qualify for a mixed use or is it something that the, the zoning ordinance considers something bigger and?
I don't know that it's, that's spelled out that specific.
Like if you're, you know, cause you're saying, section three point seven, that's where it comes from, three point seven, do not permit, permit mixed use projects. Well, how I read that is, well, I think if they were to come in asking for a mixed use project.
I, I think, I think the mixed use, the, the mixed use, um, terminology was, um, drawn, drawn up primarily to be utilized in the, um, what is it, commercial industrial flex zones.
Okay.
And, and therefore they came up with the mixed use concept such as what we have on Mass Road where the Exxon sta- Shell's, what's, what's that now?
Shell Station.
Shell Station is in the car wash and now the new, um, part of the hospital is there.
I'll just caution you, that's a separate lot.
Oh, that, that where the hospital is, but.
There's a separate lot.
But there was supposedly gonna be some multi-families that were supposed to have gone on that mixed use concept there.
That was, that was a consideration, right, but it's, it's, uh, the mixed use was primarily, I think, when they were, when something was gonna be developed and it was to help blend the residential with the commercial uses, without it being maybe overly residential. It's kind of the, the, my take on it.
I have a question. It says here, uh, that the property is located on Dunbarton Road in the agricultural district. And then here it says that the existing is zone residential and commercial.
What's the second reference you're citing from the application itself?
Right.
I, I think they're referring in their application to the use, not necessarily the zoning.
Okay.
So it's not zone residential?
No, it's, it's an agricultural area.
Right, that's what I. So this is just, since the existing is residential and commercial, is that what you meant?
They probably mean uses, yeah. So, and, and I looked at the paragraph that, uh, three dot seven speaks to section three ten and it's essentially a mixed use project is approved by the planning board, it's a planning board issue, planning board thing.
Right.
So we would have to look at it from the multiple principal uses angle. So, um, okay, any other questions for the applicant on this?
Might I add also that, um, in June when we, we saw the variance and each other variance, we actually were crouching upon, uh, the front setback and I don't know if it was a side setback as well. The new structure conforms to all setbacks.
The more conforming.
More conforming.
We like that, we like more conforming.
Been there for fifteen years. This is up at Shoreland too, isn't it?
Other questions for the applicant? All right.
Oh, yeah, I have a question.
Just re-verifying that there's, there's no expansion to the business though.
None whatsoever, no new equipment, no, uh, increased personnel, uh, nothing at all.
Vehicles?
None.
I have a question, um, you said that there was a, an illness in the family.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there gonna be handicap accessibility or does it require handicap?
I don't think, um, no, no, I don't think that's gonna be the outcome of the, my father's illness.
Okay. It's enough, need a wheelchair or whatever.
Sure, yeah, no, I, I don't believe that's the case.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone here else speaking on behalf of the applicant that would like to speak? Any butters, interested parties speaking against the application? Probably not, you're all sitting next to each other, so it's probably no against. Anyone else that wants to speak that hasn't gotten to speak?
I have, I have one more question. It says here the proposed additions would require a New Hampshire DES shoreline permit. And when you're saying the additions, is that taking into consideration the, uh, construction business?
Yes.
The whole, the whole?
Yes.
Everything, okay.
If they go for, uh, for a shoreline permit, it requires everything of permits.
So you do have to go for the permit? It, it says here would require, so you'd have to go for that permanent and they will take in consideration the business?
It's not in any of the restricted zones, it's just within the.
Good. Thank you.
All right, any last questions before we close the public hearing? And with that, we'll close the public hearing for deliberation, motions.
To approve.
What's that?
A motion to approve.
Yeah.
And I'll second.
Okay, so maybe you've got a motion.
Was that a motion to approve?
Yes.
Okay, and I'll second.
Any discussion? So they're approving, uh, just making sure we have it right, there were, there were, uh, variances. That's it, just variances. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed or abstained? Okay.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you for your patience, all being here for three and a half hours.
I thought the guy was for the, the, the.
Okay, so there is no other public hearings that's direct there? So we have no rehearing requests. We have, uh, no correspondence, I don't think we had it here, other than the, oh, we have this. And we have two items for action items, the first being the discussion of the two thousand eleven zoning. Actually, I'm gonna take these out of order if that's okay.
No.
Can you hold on for a second, I gotta find one, I, I had them here and now they're.
I've got extra copies if you need, Gail.
Here.
Maybe that's where it went?
Yeah, I think it slipped over here. You know, me, I just grabbed it. Yeah, it slipped.
So the first one, I think we're gonna address the, I think would be the easier one, discussion of the rules and procedure and changes to alternate member participation during deliberations provided by chapter two seventy, which SB four four eight effective July sixth, two thousand and ten. The, uh, alternate member participation. Anybody have any comment on that or how we want it? Is, is, is there a formal way to add it to our rules of procedure or is this?
Yeah, what we, what I would do is draft language and it would be, um, read, it needs to be read at two, um, subsequent meetings.
Two subsequent meetings.
Yep. But what I wanted to get first from the board is a feeling on which way you want it to go, do you want to? The, the new RSA requires, it does allow that, and it's clear now that alternate members can participate in the deliberative session. Before, there was no discussion about it and depending on which lawyer you talk to, they would advise you differently.
Right.
And what the legislature made clear is alternates can participate in the deliberative sessions provided it is clear, it's stated in your rules of procedure, it basically gives the applicant a, you know, the heads up of how this board would act in that case, so.
Uh, I mean, I'll throw how I've thought about it, uh, that I think we could go from here, is that we do allow the alternates to stay at the table to, are we talking deliberations or just deliberations?
Deliberations, no, the public hearing, there's been case law because you've got, public hearings can go over many meetings and you might have people jump in and out. I think there's always been an agreement that, uh, alternate members can participate in the public hearing. But when it came time for the deliberative session, all the advice was pick your five members and everybody else step away and do not participate.
Okay.
Because there was always the fear that somebody not voting could influence the voting members.
New Hampshire legislature now leaves it up to us.
Correct.
Yeah, they, they give each board a.
All right, so it changed my pattern, I was gonna say it a little bit. So I, I think that, uh, down and simple, I think that the person who hasn't been chosen to be, uh, a voting member can stay at the table. I think they can be a participant in the discussion or the deliberation. But at the beginning of the deliberation, the chair must identify who the voting members are.
Correct.
Before deliberation takes place, it can't be after deliberation takes place, we're ready for votes.
I agree with you a hundred percent on that one.
Cause I, the reason I say it is, you don't wanna pick and choose, well, I think you're gonna vote against it.
It leaves, it leaves that question, it leaves that out.
Well, primarily the voting members would be the elected members first anyway, right?
Yes.
So then it would be just, uh.
If they're short.
But if you, we have. If we're short, then you, who's the voting member?
And we have actually more than one alternates for the first time in.
At least a couple of them.
We've got three.
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 Wow, yeah. And so, and because we have three, that is very important that, that I do agree that before we start to deliberate, we know who the voting members are going to be. Because that could be a call the chairman makes after hearing all the deliberations and they say, no, 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 I like the way she was talking, so I'm gonna ask her to vote and not you.
That's too many opportunities for appeal and.
Well, one of the things that the planning board has done is that when they, cause they have two alternates quite often and throughout the course of the evening, they just alternate, um, this one votes and just, you know, on this one and then the next one, the next one goes and it's back and forth, so it's not picking and choosing. And it doesn't appear that it's picking and choosing because of the way that they vote.
Well, that's what he did the last time I was here.
Yeah, just to get to participation.
And the recording secretary would be responsible for keeping track.
Diligently.
Diligently.
Do you believe that we would need to get into, uh, to be that defined that it is, if there's more than one alternate, that we rotate between the alternates instead? That it's, I think it could be as simple as the chair must recognize who the voting members are, if an alternate needs to come in to play.
Right, then you just, you just point that out.
Right.
Yeah, it doesn't have to, we don't have to be that specific. I mean, the more rules you make, the more.
Yeah.
Sometimes you make too many rules, you micromanage and you create, when you have an oversight or something, you're giving somebody a grounds to.
Right.
Come back at you, you know, for something silly.
And can we water it down a little bit in case we forget that it's a should? That the chair should?
Should, I would say should.
Cause it, like, what if you forget halfway through, dang it, I didn't recognize who was gonna be, now we gotta start over the deliberation. Can we, can we be weak or does it need to be a shall?
I'm sure we can, again, develop the language that, and then bring it to the.
Rather than the chair must.
I think it should be a should. Or, you know, something that just says, you know, intends to or something, you know, normal procedure is to designate it at the beginning of deliberations.
You're going halfway through a deliberations and you hadn't put somebody, I'd say draw straws.
Yeah.
Because otherwise you really would be up for appeal.
I don't know if we wanna put that in the rules of procedure, but.
I think we'll all help each other through.
Do you have, anybody else have a different idea?
No, I, I agree that, that I feel the, that alternates, I, I believe that it, um, the idea of. No, I, I agree that, that I feel the, that alternates, I, I believe that it, um, the idea of teamwork and getting as much on the table that everybody could offer is more beneficial than being afraid that somebody's going to quote unquote sway the opinion of somebody. I think it is more important that everybody get their thoughts on the table and work as a team and then end up with the five votes.
Okay. Any other comments? Different pers- perspective? Is, is that, do you have sufficient?
I have sufficient direction to, to draft language that can be read at the next meeting to change the rules.
Now, we can, we can implement that probably right away, can we not? Can we say?
I'll have to look at the existing rules. I think a change of the rules of procedure needs to be read at, I believe it's two subsequent meetings.
How do we do it now? What's, what's the rules of procedure right now say on designating alternates? Who's going to?
It doesn't, it doesn't speak to it.
So essentially it's whatever the chair decides right now. So aren't it, that's how I'm going to try do it.
Ooh.
But I don't have to. You know, until it gets to be formalized.
You've got two months.
Now we've got two months to try different things, right? Maybe we won't like it. Maybe we'll have five people every time. Any other discussion on that topic?
Nobody have a copy of it if you want it, the, uh, two twenty.
No, I'm good. Believe me.
Two seventy, yes.
Okay, we'll move on to the second, uh. Action item, discussion of the two thousand eleven zoning change proposals. And so we have it in front of us. Is, is this two page that we're speaking to?
It is.
Yes.
Who would like to speak to, uh, looks like we did comments and changes to it. Is that what we have?
Yes, and, and I have some more.
Some more, okay, so whose comments are these?
Those are my, these, all these comments are my comments that are simply meant to reflect how the discussion between Kathy and Ed and I went to give a little bit of explanation. And if you'd like me to go through them step by step, I can, or I don't know what your preference is.
Okay, so yeah, let's, let's, I think the, the ones are clear, so let's start from the top and the table three dash eleven, table of principal uses, was there?
There's no proposed change to raising and keeping of livestock and poultry as a principal use.
Okay. So now we're just talking about accessory uses then?
Yes, and what that was would, and what came from discussion is it should be two poultry and livestock should be broken out when it's accessory to the principal residential use. And that livestock are not appropriate in the R one and R two districts.
The raising and keeping of livestock.
This is again, when it's accessory to a residential use on the property.
We came to that conclusion because, um, if we go back and we look over how the zoning board has voted, uh, um, in all issues dealing with livestock in a residential, residentially zoned area, um, that it has always been denied, um, in all past cases that have come before the zoning board. So, um, however, the past zoning board, um, boards have also, um, allowed poultry within limitations, um, based upon pretty much the criteria of the special exception in residential areas. So to accommodate that, we thought it would be best to split them. Which would give the opportunity for people who live in a principal residential area to keep poultry, um, as an accessory use with limitations that we'll go forward with. However, in the spirit of all decisions made in the past, do not permit livestock.
Okay.
And as I was speaking on this right now, I just have a little technical issue that I brought Dr. Derek about this morning. In that I, I, I feel, and I'm throwing it on the table for clarification, I feel that because, um, table three eleven states raising and keeping of livestock and poultry in agricultural, um, in a R one and R two district, it says special exception. So I could see an attorney coming in here and saying, but I can have both livestock and poultry in an R one and an R two as a principal use with a special exception. And I think maybe the terminology either needs to be and or, or or, not and.
Where would you, and what specific line?
J four.
J four, you think the raising and keeping of livestock or poultry?
Or poultry, because we're very definitive under R one and R two as to allowing poultry only with special exception as an accessory use.
But that's, that's a, as a principal use, it's, it's entirely different than a accessory use.
Right. But do you, but as a principal use in an R one and an R two, do you want to allow livestock and poultry?
At the same, you, you saying we shouldn't do it at the same time? There's literally one or the other?
I think what you're, what you're getting at is exactly what we did in accessory, which is break them apart.
Right.
Rather than, than put them, have them together.
But I think what's, this started out was, was, uh, an aim to define, so people didn't have to get a variance for two principal uses.
Right.
It was designed to, what if somebody has a house and they want to raise some chickens or some livestock or, or something? So it's broke out to the accessory. If you make that change, you're, you're, you're solving one problem, but you're also making a change to the existing table, which if, if that's your goal, then you can propose that. I'm not saying you can't propose that.
It's unrelated to.
But that's not what you originally set out to do.
Right. And I think, I think, uh, yeah, all right.
Do we? So they're saying in an R one and R two, if your principal use is agricultural, then you can raise livestock and poultry.
Yes, if you don't have a house there. Say you have nothing, it's an empty lot.
Right.
You can put.
As long as it's not interfering.
You have an empty lot, you could have a big hen house, chicken house, goats, whatever in a residential zone.
If it's approved through a special exception.
That's what it says. That's what it says.
In that way, prob, I, I don't know the history, but my guess would be it's been that way since the zoning ordinance was adopted.
Right.
But I think that's why we, we got into, why we got into this issue is because we wanted more clarity of it.
Mm-hmm.
Because it has been confusing and it has confused people.
Well, the thing is with it, with that by special exception on its own lot being a principal use, they still have a lot of hoops to jump through to be able to get it approved.
That's true.
So you still have the protections there.
Yes. It shall not be raised.
This is what I said last.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
And out of curiosity.
That's fine.
If you're, if you're in an agricultural area and you're R one and R two, are those R one and R two lots conforming to the, um, what am I looking for the words? And I'm looking for the dimensional?
The setbacks and stuff.
The lot, the lot size, lot dimension, right.
Zoning requirements.
If a lot is non-conforming because it has.
In other words, are those R one and R two lots a minimum of two acres? Which is what agriculture, they don't have to be.
No, they're like tiny postage.
Some of them can be tiny.
It's per Nardville.
But that's, but that's where you say section five point five applies. You have to go back to five point five and make five point five work for you.
Okay.
So you could have a lot that's not much bigger than.
A conforming lot in Pernardville is ten thousand square feet. That's a hundred by a hundred.
Yeah.
Which most don't have.
Yeah, most are non-conforming.
Yeah, right.
But does that say if you don't have a non-conform, if you have a non-conforming lot, you can't do this? No, you can still apply for this.
You need a special exception.
Right.
To, to develop that non-conforming lot.
And, and therefore you get into the nuisance area.
That's, that's considered development?
Then you get into all the criteria.
Putting livestock on it would be considered development?
Well, see, see how it flies and if it.
So now, so now you've got, you cover yourself with five point five.
Right. These blanks here show that this not, this is not permitted. It's not permitted.
Okay.
I think I like it as it is.
Okay. I, I agree. I agree, because it does, it does go to the supplemental standards of five point five. And I had to get that clarified in my mind and discussed and thank you, but I'm, I'm okay with it now. Aren't you all happy about that? Okay. We changed, go ahead, Derek.
Um, as you go to the supplemental standards in five point five, and what it might help people to do is open the zoning ordinance to see what we currently have. That might be helpful.
I have last year's ordinances. There weren't any changes.
There were no changes to that section. It's under, it's on page twenty six, section five point five.
Okay.
It currently reads farm buildings in the agricultural or conservation zone shall be located no closer than one hundred feet to any boundary of a residential district. What, what, through discussions with Ed and Kathy, we tried to do was make a distinction between setbacks to a residential district where you have a transition where you're going from agricultural to R two or R one, and a distinction between setbacks to property lines. So section five point five point one defines setbacks for farm buildings from property lines. There being a hundred foot setback in the conservation open space district, district and fifty feet in the agricultural R one and R two district.
We felt comfortable that a fifty foot setback on a property line was acceptable, knowing that, um.
Bigger than ten, ten feet.
They, they still need a special exception.
Yeah.
So we're still covered with other areas.
Although if it's a principal use, or not a principal, but it's permitted by right in the agricultural and conservation open district. They will not come before us.
No, the, the hundred foot.
Just have to apply to this.
The conservation stayed the same pretty, you might say, because we kept, we maintained a hundred foot to any, a hundred foot.
Not necessarily, because I didn't interpret it that way. I interpreted it that you meet the building setbacks for that district. When you're next to a district, a district boundary of a residential district, then you have the hundred foot setback. And I know reading the, the minutes from the planning board meeting where they, uh, their workshop last week when they saw the first draft of this and commented on it. Some of the members thought it was a hundred foot setback from.
Property line.
Property lines. That's not how I interpret it.
Well, that isn't what it says.
No? And we may have looked at that differently in a residential district.
So, so that brings into play the terminology of property line, which is not in five point five, which does, is not covered into five point five now.
So, right. So if you lived in a conservation, or, yeah, conservation district and you are not next to a residential district, all you have to do is put a building that is more than fifty feet from your property line. That's it. And you can do it, you don't even have to come before this board. If you can meet that minimum requirement, you're good to go.
And then five point five point two mirrors the language that's currently in the zoning ordinance. It keeps that, that same exact, um, it just tries to, to, I guess, clarify that a little bit. And then, let's see. Um, and I think this is language that Kevin proposed and we also talked about on five point five point three for, um, that it shall not become an annoyance or nuisance to other properties. And if, if anyone has any comments, they can jump in at any point, please.
The, the one, I think we, we said something about nuisance, we would, we would, um, refer to the Supreme Court definition of a nuisance.
But we did not add that into the wording.
Right, we didn't define it.
Right.
We'd rather not.
Well, the Supreme Court's defined it, so.
Right, exactly.
And then under, uh, point four, uh, we point to the best management practices adopted by the agricultural department. And I have printed out and provided to you tonight just a sample of what they are for manure management. Um, they're, they're quite extensive.
This is nothing you're expected to do, to provide to any applicant, to give them this. This is something they get to do on their own.
They, they would, I mean, as, as the town, we would help an app, if they came in and said, I want to, I want to, I'm in the R one district and I want to raise chickens, I know I need to go for a special exception. What are these best management practices? Yeah, we'd point them in the right direction. We would help them find them and.
You're not going to print them and give it to them and?
We could if they were willing to pay the necessary copy fees. Yeah, we're not, yeah.
No, do it for free.
No.
No, and, and I pay particular attention to this and I, I just got this from Derek this morning and have not had the opportunity to review it. But I, I, I do want to, um, review it regarding, um, the best, what they, what they say the best management practice for, um, manure, uh, removal is especially the bedding. Remo, the bedding material, um. I don't know if we, we, we have addressed that enough. I, I'm not ready yet. Well, we, yeah, you know, uh, for the guidance, we go get the manure, you know?
But again, we're saying shall be conducted, so we're not going to have, you know, people going out there and checking the bedding and the chickens and stuff. Hopefully we don't do that.
I mean, you, you point them in the direction of this, this is what they do.
Right.
And if they, um, don't do that, then somebody's probably going to come back with a complaint or something and it can be followed through with. I don't think we need to elaborate on it greatly within the ordinance.
And I, I think Derek and I touched upon this a little bit this morning because one of the things we, we could always do as far as, uh, board members when we're granting a special exception is you can condition it that if, um, if at any time, um, the removal of manure, I'm just throwing that, or any other condition is such that it creates a nuisance and, and undefined nuisance or a nuisance in the future, that the applicant will have to return, uh, for a, for a special exception or return to the board for some reason. If it creates a nuisance.
And they can't just be found in violation?
Yeah.
Just be found in violation? Who defines the nuisance and is, whether it's in violation or not? Is that you?
If, yeah, if there was a complaint about somebody who had these animals and there was a complaint about a nuisance, I would have to go out and determine whether or not there was a nuisance.
And, and you have language to do that? Do you have enforcement powers to?
I, I can find that there's a nuisance and enforce through the district court and the, the property owner has the ability to appeal that to the zoning board.
Right.
And come and bring any decision I make for you to say, no, actually it is not a nuisance.
So there's probably a process. I think there's a process already in place to address that.
Well, I, I know there is one.
Okay.
Well, for the chickens too, you have to go through the. Well, yeah, they, they have issues with bedding.
Mm-hmm.
And the nuisances I'm looking at are noise and, and, and odor, odor.
Yep, I understand.
So it's on, you know, it's on, we, we understand that that, that is. Okay.
Okay, and then under, um, point five, that is limited really to when it's an accessory use of a principal residential use. Uh, that it's incidental, and I guess the, the planning board also raised some question about this language, which may need to be changed on A. That it's clearly incidental and subordinate to the use of the dwelling unit as a residence. Where it'd probably be more appropriate to the use of the lot for residential purposes.
Lot or property?
Yeah.
What would be the better verbage, lot or property?
Yeah, but property or lot.
I think our ordinance uses them interchangeably.
Really? Okay. What do you prefer?
I prefer, uh, lot.
Okay.
This is going back to, okay, anyway, I'll get that later.
Cause as they, as the planning board discussed, um, most likely you're not going to have livestock in your living room.
Exactly. Unless it's a pig. Little pot-bellied pig.
Yeah.
The raising and keeping of livestock, but it shall be conducted.
Not my wife.
Shall be conducted, okay.
And then, and then B is to ensure that people aren't renting out, I guess, space on their land.
Mm-hmm. Would the second half of B be more appropriate in point three? Or was it specifically identified to be part of a residential use only?
The language was taken from the home occupation portion under five point twelve. I don't know, because you could have, you could have a principal use that is only keeping livestock and poultry and that person is not going to be a resident of the premises.
Okay.
So that'd be my only concern there, I could see talking about.
Cause it's in a, in a line of nuisance and.
Yeah, I could see the sec, okay, the second part possibly bringing up.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, the second part.
Yeah, I don't see any issue with bringing that up to three if everyone, um.
It's distinct from the, who's doing it.
I'd move it.
Okay.
So moving five A?
No.
Five B, I'm sorry.
Second half of five.
Five B, where it says, and shall not degrade, right.
Take that up to five three, okay. And then, uh, C, there was a.
Yeah, there's gotta be one change.
There was a C that was talked about, just, uh, limiting the number of poultry in the R one and R two district.
Yep.
Which if somebody wanted to go beyond that, six hens, uh, they could do so through the variance process.
There was an issue that was brought up to us, um, by Karen McCray, which does state in the ordinances that.
In the state statute.
In the state statutes, I'm sorry, in the state statutes, that you cannot gift or purchase chicks that are four weeks or younger in quantities less than twelve. And she didn't know if it would be effective here, and my response is, no, because A, you can buy the chicks four weeks and one day and buy more than six. You can buy, you can buy less than twelve. And people, by state statute, they can't give people chicks that are four weeks and under, less than twelve.
Spirit to that ordinance is?
That is actually, talking to the agriculture department has to do with a body temperature issue, you can't, they have to congregate together. And I, I think the worry probably was that somebody would give somebody a baby chick for Easter that was a week old and it would, uh, I don't know, it just, yeah, wouldn't be able to survive on its own. That, that's what they, they said the primary drive behind that was warmth issue.
So I, I think, I think we're covered, I'm glad she brought it to our attention, because I think we're covered with the six and, again. And I, if they put, now, if somebody wanted to purchase less than twelve outside the state of New Hampshire, could they do that?
They probably could, but there's probably restrictions about taking poultry over state lines.
Oh, okay, but I'm just kidding, but whatever, I, I mean, that's.
Nobody reads those laws.
Oh, yeah. Have you ever gone to, driven into California?
No.
Can't bring any vegetables in California.
Oh, yeah.
Used to, airplanes and everybody, I don't, they don't.
Cause of the bug.
I used to, still do.
Um, so just, just bottom. Somebody was living in the conserva, uh, conservation district. Could put a building up that's greater than fifty feet from their property line and wanted to have six hens. They will not come before you.
Correct.
You will not see them.
No.
Actually, it'd be a hundred.
Conservation would be a hundred.
Be a hundred.
Conservation's a big district though.
Those are five acre lots.
Five acre lots.
And the normal setback for a building is fifty feet from the side property line. So this is an increase.
Yeah, up to a hundred feet for.
Yeah, a hundred.
Yep. Okay, so let's ba, I'll back it up then, so the agricultural, and then we have a lot of residential areas in the agricultural zone. So somebody who's, let's look at Lisa Lane Properties.
These are the, the light green.
Uh-huh.
Agricultural.
Right, so let's look at those Lisa Lane properties that we addressed a year ago, where they had these nice properties, half a million dollar properties. Fifty feet, probably, these are pretty good sized properties, fifty feet, but they can still see each other, cause there's not many trees there. Someone could say, I want six chick, uh, six hens there, my neighbor who's a hundred feet away. I, I, I'm good, I can put up a house where it's next to my house, I'm gonna buy six and I can do it without any special exception. Just beware.
I can do that, I can do that in mind.
Actually, in the agricultural zone, you could do more than six, because there's no limit on the number and it's permitted.
So just beware that in your, your residential agricultural areas will probably would be the ones that would be pushing back on this the hardest. And then we have a lot of residential in the agricultural area, that they're not, that they don't get a chance to be heard at a special exception by grant, by allowing it as a principle and by right.
That, that's the underlying zoning, a lot of, you know, I can't speak for all the open space developments to which you speak, but many of them do have covenants and restrictions and have extensive, um, open space.
To avoid stuff like this.
There, there are many where there, you can't have outdoor clotheslines, above ground pools.
Oh, yeah.
Shit.
Lot of that.
Okay. All right, I'm, I'm good.
They have to, but this, this makes, I think it makes our job and definitely Derek's job a lot easier, because this is becoming an, an up and coming issue. There, there is something that I, I also have an issue with is that we don't say how close the livestock.
Can be to the property line.
Can go to the property line.
This is simply farm buildings.
This is simply farm buildings. So you can, you can meet the requirements of putting a farm building fifty feet from the property line. But that doesn't mean the little critters can't come over to your property line. That's what, that's what people have fences for.
Fences make good neighbors.
Exactly.
Right? And if you've got those chickens that are wandering around and they come up to your property line and they defecate right there, instead of. Which they will do. Which they will do. So we look back at the one that we approved at near Saint Anselm there, uh, Saint Anselm. And this is where they're gonna have a little mobile thing that move around, but the principal primary coop was gonna be thirty-five feet so from the property line next to the house, and we were like, kinda focusing on that distance to the property line, under the corner, since we were doing that. So do we have any change of mind?
We just point them in this direction.
Does that speak to?
That's mostly manure management.
Mostly for manure.
Right, but I mean, if, if they're, for those that are roaming free, if they're roaming up to the property line, you know, away from the house or something like that, I would think that any of the waste and things like that would still be covered in this.
And I guess my point was, does that become an annoyance or nuisance? And does it degrade or adversely affect the residential character of the buildings or surrounding properties? I don't know the answer to that question, cause it's gonna be a case by, I don't, it's gonna be a case by case basis. And even as the zoning officer that is forced to make that determination, it's an appealable determination. So the property owners with the little critters, if they're not happy, they can appeal it. The neighbor that is affected by it has the ability to appeal it.
So I think three weeks ago, it made the newspaper that Manchester was starting to deal with this issue.
Yeah.
Same, the same way, that somebody there was having chickens in their front yard, cause that was the place for it to be.
Well, people are looking to create a different lifestyle, maybe be a little healthier, they're also looking to possibly save money in this economy, you know?
So where do we go from here?
I, I don't know if there are any other proposed changes, the only other thing that the planning board raised was the question of defining poultry and defining livestock. And what we can do is mirror the definitions that are in state statute.
Cause they are defined in state statutes.
Why do they ask us a question like that when those words are already in the zoning ordinance? Right?
People need to know, so if they don't know, they need to ask, so they can't be all as knowledgeable as we are.
I don't know if I want to define those. Are, are we talking defining as in limits of size and types and.
Well, they define, they decide types, like they, they defy, you, you read, you read them to me.
The, the RSA is very specific.
On what the definition.
What, I only went to the definition of livestock, but it is bovine, horses, and then it gets into emus, ostriches, deer, reindeer.
Sheeps, goats.
So they sang.
Sheep, goats, donkeys, everything.
So the planning board may not have, is the planning board, you said, the planning board may not have had so much a, uh, an issue if it's a principal use, uh, primary use, because you have a bigger piece of property, I guess, that you could have a cow there. But if it, you have a cow as an accessory use to a principal residence, is that when they say, okay, now you gotta.
Wha, what, what I think they recognize is our zoning ordinance doesn't have that definition, and they had not addressed that in the past. And I think they see this as an opportunity to do that at the same time.
I'm not interested, I, 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 my personal opinion is I'm not interested, only for the fact that then we have to start thinking going back to the, the top one. That, in the.
Well, the, the minutes, um, which I didn't bring with me.
They're, they're staples to the last page of the best management practices.
Okay, the minutes from the planning board meeting when they discussed this, um, are short and sweet. And we also have the opportunity at our next meeting of the zoning board to continue to discuss this if we so choose. But the sooner the better, we get it resolved, but haste can make ways, but we do have the opportunity to review anything at our next zoning board meeting, prior to it having to go to the town for printing or whatever.
Ultimately, what I'd like you to, see you to do is to make decisions tonight, so it can go back to the planning board for November eighteenth.
And that's what I thought.
Their lone November meeting.
Right.
That way, if they have any issues, they can say, zoning board, you have one more crack at it at your December meeting to make a few minor adjustments.
Right, say go for it.
Say go for it, yeah.
Are you interested in defining livestock?
If, you know what, if it's gonna make them happy.
Couldn't we just put.
Make them happy, just take the state statutes and put them in the book.
Yeah, but if it's that extensive, can we just make a reference to the state statute?
I was just gonna say, couldn't we just go to, in our first mention of livestock and poultry and then just put in as defined by state statute? Yep. That covers us. Well, that would be automatic, I mean, that is without reference.
But see, they wanna see automatic, that's the problem.
But I, but maybe, and I haven't read the minutes, if I were sitting in the planning board and you came to me and says, I want you to define livestock, would be, why they're asking it is, have you considered on limiting the types of livestock that you're willing to do this for? Not on which lives, you know, what is livestock, they're gonna say, do you really want someone to raise a reindeer as a necessary use in the, in the agricultural district, when they're only fifty feet from the property line? Are they saying, is that what you really want, are you thinking about that? And so I think that was the reason for the question.
But then again, I guess I would come under granting a special exception, maybe.
Yeah, that's what I said before, we could, as a special exception, you can basically wheel and deal, we don't like this, we don't think it's too much.
I would put in as defined by state statutes and let them come back and see what they say they don't like about it.
Cause what, what I can do is attach the state statutes.
Yeah.
You may be opening yourself up for one heck of a fight as to why I can't raise this type of animal versus another type of animal, because the care and feeding, et cetera, are the same, so when we start limiting the types of animals, I don't know, are we opening ourselves up for a, a big problem?
I think that's why they asked the question, are you sure you wanna raise that reindeer?
There aren't too many.
Because I think.
Close around here that, I mean.
A cow.
Yeah, but they're adaptable to this environment, I can see where there might be some animals that would be adaptable.
I, I don't think by state statute law that we can supersede what they define.
Oh, sure, we can, we can.
You, you may not be able to change the definition, but what you.
But you can't make it more.
Be able to say is, instead of livestock, it's for the purposes of this, for the purposes of raising and keeping livestock, it can only be these animals, but that might need some review, because the state of New Hampshire's always been an agricultural first state.
That's why I don't, I don't think we should try even answer, because I think the default is, if somebody asks the question, uh, what is livestock, what are you talking about? Well, let's just go to the definition in the RSA, well, there's no reason the Goffstown zoning ordinance has to define livestock. It's defined in the RSA already, or in state statute, go to there.
So why not just make reference to the state statute and call it a day?
Sure, we can, but I don't think it's necessary to do that, I think the default answer is that you would always default to the state statutes, if it's not defined in the zoning.
Well, I think if you put as defined by state statutes, then the people that's applying would go look at the state statute.
But then you like, but then you're saying, wow, it says cows, you can do cows, I don't want them to do cows.
Maybe they're in a place where they can do cows. I have, if, if we're done with that topic, I have one other thing that I wanna bring up.
Are you talking, regarding?
Yeah, when we're done with this.
Okay.
Are we done with this?
Well, what are we gonna do about?
Submit it.
What about the state statute, well, you know what?
I would say, do not put it in there, and if, and if the planning board asks the question on November eighteenth or December, why was, why didn't you provide a definition of livestock and poultry, and say, we felt the RSA, the state statute did that enough already? And, and they could make the suggestion that.
If they wanna recommend it, we'll listen to their recommendation.
Okay.
But if you put as defined by state statute, then the applicant is less likely to come in and ask for something that's not allowed in the, um, our, in our zoning.
Except we're not limiting anything, and we're not limiting anything that the state allows.
Correct.
Yeah.
Hope we start naming all the.
It's a pretty extensive list, it was about, it was probably about fifteen.
So, so my, my question is, sure, the next step is submit it to the planning board, but is it, are the responsibility of someone here to present it to the planning board? Is it someone?
I, I would like somebody to be available on the eighteenth, I will need to check with the planner to see, cause that is a regular meeting, it's not a workshop meeting, and they will have agended items that night. So, um, if somebody is available, cause unfortunately, I believe, I, I have a prior commitment that night.
I'm always there, so I can answer questions if they have it.
Now, cause I remember last year, when, when the public was introducing zoning amendments, they spoke to the planning board. Are they doing that same type of thing?
They'll do the same.
So they don't want us to speak, cause we're a zoning board, we're a board, we don't have to do that process?
No, because I think what you're doing in this process is you are suggesting to the planning board that they present this amendment, cause this is gonna be a planning board amendment, this is not, this is not a petition zoning article.
That's it.
Whereas, yeah, you were referring to the petition zoning article, where people go out and get the signatures of, uh, registered voters.
Twenty-five people.
Yes.
But come up with two separate boards, it isn't recommended by the zoning board.
Right, that's what I was, I was.
Cause the planning boards, the zoning ordinance is the tool of the planning board, and under state statute, there's procedure that they propose amendments to it and that they make recommendations on amendments. So we do all the work and they get the glory.
And they recommend it, the town votes for it, and then the people don't like it, hey, you know, it's a planning board.
Then we can always put it in as a petition, I don't know.
If somebody is willing to track down signatures, you could do that.
Yeah.
But the only thing is, your time window is, I believe, November ninth to December ninth.
Okay, I'm done with this one.
Okay, my, I have a little pet peeve that I've seen a little bit or heard a little bit of at various planning board meetings. And that is when an applicant comes and they say, well, the, the decision was this, 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 and this, and these were the conditions. And they just kind of dismiss their representations. There are, our decisions are based on the representations that they make, and there, there have been inferences where these applicants think that they don't have to follow through with those conditions or those, those, um, the represent, representations that they made, and that they just kind of, just unilaterally change them. And I would like to know if we could, on our notice of decision, because I know it's in the zoning ordinance, but nobody tends to see that or acknowledge that it's there, but it is in the ordinance, I believe, that the decisions are based as much on their, um, their representation as well as the conditions that we give them. So I would like to have any, or know if we could put any, um, any decision that we make that it specifies that these are the conditions based on the representations that they made in writing, in their application and in their oral presentation. in writing, in their application, and in their oral presentation.
I just wanna find some language that's already in the ordinance that could be.
Yeah, I know, I know it's in the ordinance. I know I've seen it in the ordinance, but it just always seems to go by the wayside. And then, um, there was one that was at the planning board where, um, they had told us that they would only have a certain number of cars or something parked, or they would only do a certain number of hour, or limit their work to certain hours. And now they're saying, because we didn't specify this or that, that what they said in their application doesn't apply.
Oh, I see.
See now, I have a, I think I've heard attorneys say that you have, you have to refer to the application as that which.
Right, but they're not. They're, they're, they're saying that because, even though they represented this, or, you know, parking or hours or whatever, even though they represented it to us, and that was what our decision was based on.
Cause we didn't put it in writing.
When they get to the planning board, they change it.
What I can do is, there is a note on page ninety-nine, section fifteen, point three, point seven, point four, under public hearing. And a portion of it reads, representations made at the public hearing or material submitted to the ZBA shall be deemed to be conditions of any subsequent decision of the ZBA.
Right.
The only issue I see with that note is, that doesn't communicate what those conditions are and what those representations are, because sometimes applicants make representations in their application, in their testimony, and in their response to a butters that may be a little bit different. Do you, do you understand what I'm trying, they're saying, they, they represent a project a certain way, and then a butter, you know, voices an objection to that, and they, well, we could do this. Is that, are they, I, I would ask, if you're going to point to it, is get in, start getting into the habit of doing findings of fact.
Yeah.
That we are approving this application, these are the findings of fact, and the reason we're doing it is we're approving it based on this plan, and if you have a plan that's been marked up. I mean, I can put that generic statement on there, and I think ninety percent of the time it will work. But there are gonna be instances, and it's going to be on the larger projects that those type of issues are coming up on, where you might have, through the process, some, some, some representations that kinda don't jive.
Absolutely. A lot of findings of fact.
So, so findings of fact may be a way on, on the larger applications to do that.
So, Gail, were you looking at something that would be just placed on the notice of decision? Not, not a change of zoning ordinance necessarily?
Right, just something that we could place on the notice of decision.
I, I will start, I will start, I have a note, I have a note at the bottom that says, this variance or this special exception in accordance with the section shall be null and void in two years if no active and substantial development. And that is on every notice that's approved, to show people that they do have that time. I can also include this representations. That, that's a simple, that's a simple change. And then as you get complicated applications, you may look to findings of fact to clearly state what you understood the representations to be, to make sure that the applicant is aware what you're thinking too.
Okay. Did I answer that?
Mm-hmm, I'm happy. In, in all fairness to the situation, I mean, I think it's great to, to do that. I also think it would beho, behoove members of any board to read the minutes of the other boards where the applications were reviewed, so that they would understand what the findings of the facts were. I do know that, I mean, I took copies of conservation minutes on applications tonight that were referenced, and go back to other boards' minutes and read them. So I know exactly, or try and be as knowledgeable on, on the material, which I'm sure we all do, because of the obvious that as, as a board, we do, um, we are knowledgeable about what the other boards are doing.
I'm not trying to discount the fact that plans change when they get to the planning board. But what I'm trying to make sure is that the applicant doesn't discount the representations and promises he made to this board or to the butters or whomever.
We'll condition their, condition, condition, condition.
Okay. No, I was just trying to set up, I think I'm gonna try to be at the planning board as well. Are there any other comments or issues before we accept a motion? All right.
Did Kevin tell us?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion for adjournment? Is there a second, second by Ed? All those in favor of adjournments, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.